Good evening, I'd like to call to order the City of Lakewood City Council Study Session for February 4th, 2019. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Paul.
Here.
Roy Ball.
Here.
Gutwine.
Here.
Skilling.
LeBure.
Here.
Abel.
Here.
Vincent.
Here.
Bita.
Johnson.
Here.
Franks.
Here.
Harrison. You have a quorum.
Go ahead and note that Mr. Bita is now here. Like to welcome everybody for taking the time to come out. Please forgive us for the delay. We had a previous meeting that ran a little bit long, and as many of you know, we're having an executive session dealing with many different issues, one pertaining to issues surrounding the Rooney Valley, and we are going to continue that conversation next Monday night, and we'll also make sure that as available, we can give the community updates. So bear with us as we move forward there. We have a full agenda tonight, a lot of great information, and so I just want to roadmap us a little bit. I know there's a lot of interested folks. The idea of a study session is not a evening where we make decisions, it's not a public hearing, but this is our opportunity to hear the presentations along with the community, and then make directional recommendations to our staff, which would then take the process of the public hearing format. So every item tonight will have that opportunity to speak. We have a lot going on, so if you do wish to just say, "I agree with that speaker," or, you know, "I'm just here to listen," please let me know, and we'll continue to move through those folks. So with that, I will now get our first item, three going, which is Economic Development Update, and I'm going to invite our interim Director of Economic Development, Mr. Smithdown. And it looks like you have some folks here, too, who might...
Yes.
All right. Welcome.
Welcome. Thanks for taking some time this evening, ladies and gentlemen. I know you have a very full agenda, so we'll get right to it.
Thank you. We all do. Don't worry.
Well, thank you so kindly. Thank you for, as I mentioned, inviting us out to talk about you, or talk about economic development. We've got some tremendous guests over here, some of our partners along the way there. Up on your dais, you've got a copy of our latest and greatest brochure right here. This is an outline of about nineteen or twenty of our economic development partners, a little bit about what they do and how we interact with them. We've got three folks with us tonight, very talented and dedicated individuals, and I will be introducing them as they come up here, but essentially, they're the county folks that we work with. So folks from the Business Resource Center, which helps with entrepreneurial efforts, startup businesses, those sorts of things. We've got the, from the Business and Workforce Center, folks that help find jobs, help businesses find employees, and then Baton Cleanup this evening. We've got the Economic Development Council of Jefferson County, or the Jefferson EDC, to wrap that up. So without further ado, let's talk just a little bit of a recap in here. Lakewood, between 2017 and 2018, added 2,150 jobs, a little more than 2,000 jobs got added on there. We love that because when people are working, they've got dollars in their pocket, they're spending them in our community, and they're helping to improve the economy. Most of these jobs were done on onesies and twosies. Our companies expanded their existing roster of folks, so they went in there. Adding to that, you can see all the green arrows are pointing up, and that's the direction we like them to be, and that's the color we like them to be. $1.1 billion in commercial property sales in the city of Lakewood last year. That is a record, by the way, first time we passed $1 billion, considering it was about $487 million is our 10-year average. We're doing about double what we did in those 10-year average, meaning that we're really recovering from the Great Recession of 2008, 2009, and those numbers are starting to tumble through. Our inventory, square footage in there, 47,2, that's about 300,000. We've got about another 900,000 or so under construction right now. So that's the inventory of building and footprint that we can do. So that's 47, 2.2 million square feet of commercial property all throughout the city. We added about 100 businesses, 100-plus businesses on there. Ninety-seven of those were two or more employees. Lots of them are mom-and-pop operations, some winners in there, healthcare, real estate, finance, and construction. The occupancy rate went up. A lot of people talk about it in terms of the vacancy rate, but the opposite end of that is the occupancy rate. So it went up there. So we went from about 4.3 to 4.1 over that time, the 2017 to 2018, and our rental rates went up, so the square footage per commercial square foot that they charge out there has gone up in value, and that's a good thing. We like that. We like that direction that's going. Under the construction end of the world, 34 projects completed in 2018. You recall that medical office building that we built on the St. Anthony's campus? That was the tail end of 2017, so we filled it during the 2018 year, and so a lot of the jobs came in that swath there. But some new projects out of the ground, Belmar Shops, the local den arena, which is down on Jewel and Wadsworth, kind of an interesting business, Lift Tech Headquarters, and of course, the Starbucks on 10th and Wadsworth was another building that got completed. We had 31 projects under construction at year's end. That is folks that are under construction but not quite completed. They'll complete in 2019, and those include like the Coated Metals Group over at Sixth and Sheridan, and Spring Hill Suites in the Fairfield Inn over in the Union Corridor. Real quickly, just to give you a quick breakdown of what we do in economic development, we're worried about three primary measures. We measure a lot of things. We just did those measures for you in a lot of different ways, but they all break down to our primary. One is jobs. So if people are working, that's a good thing. So we're trying to bring jobs into the area, into the region. That's how we build the economy. We also try to bring in capital investment. That's people that are investing in buildings, in infrastructure, in all of the things that they need in order to produce, things that help out our local economy, and then a rise in the tax base. Not rise in the tax rate. Most of the time, we're against that. Most of the time, we want to get more transactions at the same old rate to increase and lift up the economy in the area. We have four areas that we primarily focus on. We call them gears. Some people call them pillars. You see them up in front of you. They're color-coded for your convenience. Business attraction is one of the ones that we work on. That's bringing in businesses that aren't here into the city, and you might know some of the names. You might not know others of the names. Hopefully, they bring jobs and capital investment with them. Business retention and expansion is the second area. We do well if we retain the businesses that we've got in the city and help them expand. We generally do that on a plus-one basis. So one more job, one more square foot absorbed, one more sale. That's how we get that moving along. Third gear is workforce development and entrepreneurialism. Sounds like two things, but really, it's the, they're combined in that we're really lifting up people, and you see that on that gear where you see the people going up there. Let's see, folks starting their own businesses, or we're getting them the skills to be employed in the jobs of the future. Fourth one that we've got on there is our marketing communications. We want to tell the world that Lakewood's a great place to do business. So we work on that on a regular basis. You get all those gears spinning at the same time. You create an economic development machine that produces the kinds of numbers that we talked about at the top end of that. We don't do it alone. Economic development is a team sport. We've got tremendous partners, as I mentioned at the top with the brochure. It's my pleasure to introduce you to three of these fine folks right now. We'll start with the first of them, but from the Jefferson County Business Resource Center, Amira Waters.
Thank you, sir.
You bet.
Ms. Waters, welcome. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for having me.
Thanks, Robert.
You bet.
So I guess you...
Well, you can touch it with the one that's right in front of the mic.
Right here?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much. So Jefferson County Business Resource Center is a nonprofit organization dedicated to providing quality services, service and support to the small business community. Sorry.
I just used the spacebar.
Oh, here? Okay. Sorry, you might have to come here. Okay. Okay. We have a variety of services. We cater to small businesses with one to 10 employees. So everything that we do caters to the needs of those folks. A lot of them are sole proprietors, and they wear a lot of hats. I myself am a sole proprietor and have had a business here in Lakewood for 22 years, so I have a unique understanding of how hard that can be sometimes. Business owners in Jefferson County, as well as residents who are seeking to start a business are eligible for up to six no-cost business coaching sessions annually. That's already paid for them, and if they want to continue to coach with us, it is only $25 a session. We work with about 50% of startup businesses, or people considering starting a business, and the other half the time, we're working with the mom-and-pops. So probably the most popular for startups is the legal structure and registration, and then for the mom-and-pop shops, they're always looking to grow and expand their business, so a lot of marketing. These are 2018 stats, so we had a total of 321 advising sessions, and out of that, 153 were unique or brand-new to Jefferson County Business Resource Center. So we're doing a pretty good job of getting out there and spreading the word. That is our greatest challenge, but we're making some headway. We offer monthly business education workshops, so two to five a month. They are either free or low cost, and again, they're designed for the business owners with one to 10 employees. Our best seminars have grown significantly, but our average attendance has stayed about the same. We also do regular surveys with our attendees, and we all have generally come out between excellent and very good. So it starts at the best is excellent, and the worst is poor. So far, we're doing all right, but, you know, my motto is always that we can improve, right? Area stats pretty much stay consistent. Lakewood, you can see, really leads the reign here, and I attribute that to our strong relationships with the economic development team here that you have here. It's a fantastic team, thoroughly enjoy working with them, but then also the local chamber and all of the business association groups. So we have in total about 37 partners within the county, but we have several in Lakewood, which gives an advantage to the business community, because again, my greatest challenge is getting the word out. Launch is by far our most successful program. It was rolled out in 2016, and started out as a six-week program. It is now a nine-week program, and they meet once a week for nine weeks. All the instructors volunteer their time and efforts, and they are the experts in their field. So some of the topics are business marketing, cash flow, bookkeeping, business taxes, sales training, customer service, all the nuts and bolts of running a business. So these experts from our community donate their time and energy to the center because they are equally as dedicated into supporting our small business community, but moreover, they understand how important it is to give back. The Expo is also a very popular program that we have. This is an annual event. It happens the third week in September, and the purpose of this event is to connect the small business community with the available resources within the county, and they are numerous. Jefferson County is very business-friendly. So every year, we have quite a few people that attend this, and they come out because they hear about this event. It's a regional event, and then they're able to find out about all the resources right in their backyard that they don't know of, and especially for mom-and-pop shops. For those of you who own a business, you know how important that is. Lastly, meet the team. We're small but mighty. I'm technically the only employee. This is Lou Reverso. She's our business advisor. She's amazing. She's a subcontractor, and what I like to say about Lou is she leads with her heart, but she will kick your butt and make sure you get your goals done. So with that, I am going to introduce Kirsten Chartier with the Jefferson County Business and Workforce Center. Thanks.
Thank you. Good evening. Welcome.
Thanks, Amira, and I have to say, we attended her Expo, and it was a great event and a great way to network with local employers. So, hi, everyone. I'm Kirsten Chartier, and I'm a business outreach specialist with the Jefferson County Business and Workforce Center. Thank you so much for having us here tonight. So as you can see, our mission statement is that we promote economic vitality by identifying, developing, and matching a talented workforce to business. We're located in Golden, and we provide free resources to the Lakewood County residents and all of Jefferson County residents and businesses. So since I'm a business outreach specialist, I work with local employers, and I'm helping them find candidates for their open positions, but I'm also working with them before that to identify the best labor market information so they can make informed hiring decisions. At the Workforce Center, my coworkers on the job seeker end are also working with our job seekers that come in through our doors, and so we really serve as that bridge between the employers and the job seekers. In a year last year, our grant-funded programs served 14,000, over 14,000 job seekers and over 1,400 employers. So also in a year, we provided job seeker resources to make sure that our candidates were as competitive as possible for those businesses with open positions. So we offered 200-plus workshops that were taught by local experts. We also partnered with local training institutions to sometimes even fund different training programs that our job seekers underwent to, again, be as competitive as possible for our businesses. We also offer businesses a pre-screened talent pool of candidates, which is especially important when we keep seeing the unemployment rate hovering just under 3% in Jefferson County. There's really a talent pool shortage, and often, often not the candidates there for the jobs that businesses have. So last year, we also offered, to help with that, we offered 55 job fairs and hiring events for 183 employers. And then for, and we'll talk a little bit about this later in the presentation, but for the employers where they don't have the candidates at all, we have internships and apprenticeships. So we're funded through the federal legislation called the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act from 1998. We call it WIOA, so for short. So this is a federal funding program. It allows us to provide our services for free, and one of the most effective ways that we found to spend this grant funding is on our work-based learning. Now, work-based learning just means that somebody is learning on the job, and they're getting paid during that. So we have four different ways that we structure work-based learning. The first is internships, and that's really a chance for the job seekers to gain experience. So let's say a phlebotomist gets out of their phlebotomist certification training program, but all the jobs they're finding require five or six months of experience minimum. We can provide an internship where we fund that phlebotomist's wages while they work with the employer. We also provide workers' comp, so that employer is getting a fully-funded candidate to help with their day-to-day operations, and the person's gaining the really valuable experience they need. Mentorships are structured the same way, only we help businesses identify emerging leaders within their organization, and we show them how to become mentors. On-the-job training is where an employer hires someone like they would anybody else, and then we can sometimes reimburse their wages up to 50% during the initial hiring period so that we can help them extend that training period and learn a new skill, maybe a new computer program specific to that business. And then finally, apprenticeships are a combination of that. So apprenticeships are where, it's a combination that the employer provides of classroom and work experience. So two employers we're partnering with currently for apprenticeships are Centura for their medical assistance and Lockheed Martin for their advanced manufacturing technicians. So Lockheed Martin wanted to, they needed workers to work on their satellites, but they weren't finding the workers within the local community that had that specialized aerospace skill set. So what we did was help them create their own talent pool. We're now in the 13th iteration of that, and so what we do is we fund the candidates while they're being trained by Lockheed Martin staff, and then at the end, they come out with transferable certifications, like the NASA cabling harness certification. So they are competitive with other employers, but the ultimate goal is for Lockheed to them hire them, so they have their own talent pool. So when we come to Lakewood residents, we served over 1,300 Lakewood residents as a whole last year, and when we say residents, we mean job seekers. Using that WIOA funding that I just mentioned for work-based learning and education programs, we had 128 Lakewood residents that came to us and completed WIOA last year. So of those 128 residents, when they came to us, only 37 were employed. The average, or pardon me, the median salary was only $12,000. When they finished our program, 102 were employed. That's an 80% employment rate after they finished our program, with, again, a median salary of $30,000, and this is again including part-time jobs as well. So that's a dramatic difference. We've also been pleased to partner with the City of Lakewood. So we found that the local businesses really needed help desk technicians for their IT departments. So we partnered with the international training provider, CompTIA, who also provides internationally-recognized certifications like Network Plus, and we partnered with them, and we put, we got entry-level job seekers, and we put them through, we helped them, we supported them and their wages through a 10-week internship program, and then when they came out at the end of that, this was done in-house at our center, when they came out at the end, now they have a new occupation, which the average wage is 27 an hour for help desk technicians. Our employers need it, and then the growth is actually 27% to the growth rate for that occupation. So at the end, we had a hiring event. We called it Tech Connect, and we were happy to have the City of Lakewood attend that. Also, you all remember the devastation that the hailstorm wreaked on local businesses, and so we partnered with the Lakewood EDC, a great partner to have. We'll be meeting a lot these first few months of the year especially, and we were able to provide a fast response to local need for the employers and job seekers. Okay, then we get to our economic impact, and before we get there, I want to also say that last year, we served 353 Lakewood employers. So with our economic impact, we get a $3.2 million budget from federal government in a year. That salary is our entire operating budget. We turned that $3.2 million into over $278 million in local wages earned as a result of the people that get jobs after coming out of our programs, and within our county. What that means, too, is that we're giving back, from that $3.2 million, we're giving back to the federal dollars returned through payroll taxes, $37 million. So the federal agencies that are giving to us, the Department of Labor and Employment, are receiving 10 times back what they gave us, and we return that money within three to four weeks as a result of our programs. So our ROI is $85.65 on the dollar. Our average cost per participant is $252 for any of our programs, from career advising to workshops to WIOA and intensive career advising services. So with that, I'll also say that the person I'm turning it over to, Kristi Pollard with the Jeffco EDC, we're proud to have one of our interns that I had the privilege of working with, who's now one of their staff, so we really enjoy the crossover there, and I'm glad to answer any questions as well.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pollard, good evening. Welcome.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank you so much for the opportunity to provide an update this evening. As you've heard from our other partners, we have a really unique thing going on here in Jefferson County with all of these different organizations working in that team sport to create jobs and encourage capital investment, and I'm here to share with you a little bit about what we're doing with Jefferson County Economic Development. So as you know, Jefferson County Economic Development Corporation is a public-private partnership that is designed to encourage new primary employment, to work with primary employers on retention and expansion efforts, and to encourage increased capital investment here in Jefferson County. And we work very closely with the City of Lakewood on a variety of different projects. You can see on this particular slide, when it comes to recruitment, we are very strategic and targeted with the industries that we are recruiting, and this is based on like companies workforce education. We want to make sure that if we're recruiting companies, that we're able to meet their existing needs. We will work with any primary employer who comes through our doors, though, so we are no respecter of industries. So you can see here, our 2018 work plan, we had a pretty aggressive goal of working with businesses to create 1,800 new primary jobs, and I'm pleased to report that we were able to work with companies to create 1,859. Of that number, 372 are here in Lakewood locally. With existing businesses, we really believe it's important to work with their existing businesses to keep them here. We don't have to convince them that Lakewood and Jefferson County are great places to do business. They've already decided that, so keeping them here is important, and working with them on expansion efforts. So with existing businesses, we worked with 157 existing businesses here in Jefferson County on expansion efforts, and 40 of those were here in the city of Lakewood. And then you can see prospects. That prospect is... That prospect is a term that we use for our pipeline of new businesses that are looking at Jefferson County. At the end of the year, we ended with 92 unique businesses, and we are now sitting at 98. So, as you know, at the end of the year, prospects don't just go away. We continue to work with many of these folks over a number of years. On the capital investment side of things, I'm pleased to report that here in just the City of Lakewood alone, these new jobs that were created, the companies helped to establish almost $38 million in new capital investment here in Lakewood. With respect to the prospects, this gives you just a quick snapshot of how many of them are new versus how many of them come from existing companies. You can see that 76% of the prospects we're working with are new to the area, and you can see a good majority of those are active. Within the different industry sectors, bio-science and professional services and manufacturing are the top types of companies that we are seeing coming here, but we are seeing unbelievable growth within the aerospace aviation industry as well as the outdoor industry, which is also in that manufacturing line item, but now that it is being actually tracked as a part of the gross domestic product, we'll be able to break that out in a much more succinct way going forward. I would invite each of you, on a quarterly basis, we put out an economic analysis of Jefferson County, and we break it out by each municipality. We'll look at commercial property, residential property, industries, unemployment rates, labor force, all of those sort of things. So, what this particular pie chart is showing you is a snapshot of all of the different industries that make up Jefferson County, and you can see the majority, which is not a, a big majority, 17% of those is from professional and business services. So, you can see, we've got a really diverse makeup of industries here in Jefferson County, which is ultimately leading to a very healthy, robust economy. To give you a quick snapshot of some of the things that we engaged in this last year in partnership with the City of Lakewood, we really believe that there's a lot of opportunity for new investment through direct foreign investment. In that regard, we were able to participate in a number of trade missions outside of the country as well as welcoming guests here to Jefferson County. We hosted a delegation from Germany in August and spent three days with them, touring them around businesses, some of our institutions of higher education, certainly talking with our partners, and really talking about the opportunities that we have here in Jeffco. In turn, we visited Germany in October. That same month, we also took a trade mission along with the governor's office to Singapore, Hong Kong, excuse me, Hong Kong and Seoul, Korea. We have had visitors from Seoul come visit us at the end of the year, had some, we had some investors who are interested in finding companies here in Jefferson County that they can invest in financially. So, we're excited about where this will go. This is obviously a growing process, but we believe, again, that it's a great opportunity. Also, kind of in that foreign direct investment space, in partnership with the City of Lakewood, we have applied for Foreign Trade Zone status, which is a status that is designated through the U.S. Department of Commerce, and we expect to have that designation hopefully by mid-year this year, assuming the federal government remains open and Department of Commerce is able to process that application. You can also see, and we're very, very proud, and I know you've had a number of presentations on opportunity zones, but for a metropolitan area like Jefferson County to get five opportunity zones, it's unheard of. And so, we are extremely pleased that the state of Colorado saw the potential in some of these areas here in Jefferson County, one of which is in Lakewood, and we are working with our partners to develop marketing strategies, strategies and investment strategies around those zones. So, with that, you've heard a lot in a really short period of time. I may be happy to answer any questions, but again, thank you. We are extremely grateful for the partnership that we have with the city.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
And with that, that kind of concludes our presentation. As Kristi mentioned, a lot of information came out real, really quickly, but the takeaways that I'd love to be sure that everyone is aware of is that we don't do this alone. We will do it in conjunction with the partners, and again, this brochure right here identifies about 19 or 20 of the partners that we work with. You only heard from three of them tonight, and then, of course, what we're doing here in Lakewood as well. And with that, that concludes our presentation. Would be happy to entertain any questions that you may have at this point.
Great. Well, well done. That was a lot of great information in like 30 minutes, so there's, there's way more to that, and, and you did mention the partners who are incredible, incredibly important part of this process, and a lot of times, businesses, we find out through you or through our partners that they're looking at, at our community, usually the first touch when a, when a company's starting to look at our community. So, thank you for that. Mr. Smith, your team is here too, and, and they do an incredible job. They're out in the community at all of our meetings, and we'll have to mention that Vanessa was just rewarded with an award Friday night.
She what?
So, it was pretty cool.
Young Professional of the Year.
Young Professional of the Year, so congratulations.
West Metro Chamber.
And she likes to be called out, it looks like. So, I had a quick question. We, we saw the jobs numbers for '18. Do you have a sense of what those are going to look like in '19? Are you, are you still seeing a lot of hiring? I know some of our, like Lockheed, we're going to see potentially some more jobs, but where do you see that going?
Generally speaking, we're seeing an upslide for at least the first half of 2019, and in the pipeline, that reflects that along the way there. Most of the local economists, the regional economists are predicting a bit of a slowdown in 2019 as compared to 2018. We posted some incredible numbers last year, and we put those up on the, on the screen for you, so you were anticipating maybe a little bit of a cooldown, but maybe that's not a, an entirely bad thing at this point, so that's the basic plan.
Okay. Counselor Gu, line?
Thank you all so much for your great work and awesome presentation. My question is, I'm sure we can all imagine why businesses would want to locate in Lakewood. What are some of the things you hear about challenges and maybe deciding not to locate in Lakewood? Primary jobs are really important to our community, and I would just love to know feedback about maybe things that they're not finding here.
Generally speaking, most of the, the ways, we, we build what we call a performa. In other words, we mathematically and with spreadsheets determine what the opportunity for success is in the community, and generally, those fall apart for just a couple of reasons. One of them is the financial commitment to the property values or, or the capital sorts of things. We've had a couple of projects that have gone by the wayside simply because the construction costs have gone up so dramatically over the last year or so that it really puts them at the edge of that performa to be able to commit to the area. Most of the time, we're not, we're not in a place where we can't find talent because we're able to connect them in with some of the, the partners that you heard from tonight, and that's a pipeline that a lot of other communities simply don't have, and we're fortunate to have that here in Jefferson County and Lakewood in order to make that portion of the performa come together. But in general, it's really a very specific sort of thing that has to do with that particular site or that particular investment that doesn't allow for it to come here.
Thank you.
Sure.
Ms. Vincent?
Yes, one of the questions I have is, my understanding is, is we're having some issues, if you could confirm or deny, around floodplain on Colfax, that people want to come in, but they can't because of the floodplain.
Floodplains are always challenging, and, and obviously, we have several of them here in the city in a variety of places, and one of the more notorious ones is up there on, on Colfax along the way. The federal government, through their FEMA program, has identified some areas that need some extensive rehabilitation, if you will, in order to make things work. We work very closely with our Public Works Department in terms of how we're going to be able to do that technically, and really, it's a matter of how are we going to finance some of those changes in the, in the future. Some businesses do get caught in that vice, but for the most part, we do our best to try to accommodate them and figure out places for them, where they can be, where they can invest, and where they can be successful.
Thank you. Nice presentation, Robert. I need to ask this simply because I've been asked. You gave the amount of jobs that we created. How many did we lose, or do you have any figures on job loss?
That's the net number, and I don't off the top of my head have how many lost or gained, but we gained more than that, lost a few along the way there. That's something that we could do a little bit lengthier analysis on, but we report out the net numbers.
Perfect, thank you.
You bet.
Anything else? All right, well, again, well done, great presentation, and for the community, all of these resources are available to you. We're members of the different organizations, and so we'd love to help see you and your company grow, and of course, stay here in Lakewood.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. Okay. Next up, we have a presentation on bike and scooter rental fleets. I'm going to invite our Public Works Director, Mr. Hutchison. I would just say that we had a, a brief look at this earlier in the year, and there was some consensus direction to go to this step. We've heard from certain folks in the community that were ready to actually launch a pilot program of their own in certain areas, and the request was to sit back a little bit and see if we can come up with some sort of rules. So, I trust council certainly had the opportunity to read all of this good stuff, and there'll be an ask to not debate the merits so much, but get any questions asked tonight, and then the, the action for council would be to then send it forward for a public, the
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. I am going to talk about, let's see, what did I call it? Scooter and bicycle rental fleets? That's an awkward mouthful, isn't it? So, I'm going to use the term micro-mobility, and I'll explain that a little bit tonight as we go forward. This evening, I'm going to talk a little bit of a, first about an update from where we were back to, back in October during the session that the mayor mentioned just a couple of minutes ago. Then I'll outline what I think will probably be the process going forward, talk about the public input, and then these other items that are on this agenda that you see here. First, a little bit of a background update. I told you that I would be using the term micro-mobility tonight. The industry and the general public haven't decided what to call this exactly. Often, it's called dockless scooters because scooters are the, the most commonly seen item in some areas. Dockless is, is the word that's used because when bike sharing first showed up, they were all, they all had docks, and you had to park it at a dock. You couldn't park it anywhere you wanted to. But, but defining something by what it's not sometimes becomes awkward, particularly as time goes by. So, I'm going to just call it micro-mobility, which may be the term of the future. We'll, we'll see. Part of tonight's presentation does have to do with predicting the future, and I'll try to point those pieces out as we go. There are a, a number of things that are happening in the marketplace with the companies that are involved, the number of companies that are involved, the way the public is responding to the opportunity to use these kinds of vehicles, and I'll touch on that. In Lakewood, we've had docked bicycles for a long time. B-cycle has been at the Federal Center, but only the Federal Center for quite a while, and for a long time, B-cycle only had docked vehicles. Now, they have an option that doesn't require a dock, so that's one of the changes that's occurred. There's been a lot of other evolution as well, including General Motors getting into the business. This is, this vehicle is one that General Motors has created and that they're planning to deploy. Part of their goal is to have less congestion and lower emissions, and this is the, one of the ways that they want to provide that, is by having different kinds of vehicles. Daimler, you probably know those folks. They are also in the business now in Europe. Uber and Lyft have each bought into this area. Segway is expanding its opportunities, its, its vehicle types, its device types. And interestingly, scooters had faster growth in their first year of existence on the planet in this kind of form than either Uber or Lyft did, and as you know, Uber and Lyft are fairly easily found these days. There's also change happening in the vehicles. Scooters are starting to have bigger wheels to make them a little more safe. They're having suspension systems put on them that'll help as well. There's also a model where the providers may deliver the scooter or bicycle to your door. You can use it for the day and return it to your house, but have exclusive use of it during the day. So, there's a lot of evolution happening, and the only point to all of that really is that we are trying to predict a bit how to manage something that we don't quite know how it's going to evolve. So, there may be times in the future where we need to adjust, but we think we're looking at this in a way that's going to, going to work pretty well for the long term. And there's probably something between a scooter and a bicycle. It's a scooter with a seat that's probably close. We'll see how that goes. One point I want to make early here in this presentation is that this is not a city program in the sense that the city's funding any of it, and that is a distinction from B-cycle in Denver. And Denver, Denver does provide the docking stations, and they're not cheap. We're not talking about docking stations, but we're also not talking about the city funding the cycles or the scooters or any of those programs. Those will be operated by separate transportation companies. What we're talking about this evening is what's the best way to manage that within the city itself. As the mayor mentioned, there was a study session in October. We've since had quite a bit of public input, including four different public meetings, and then tonight, we'll have this discussion. There'll be some public comment, I suspect, and we'll look for your guidance on where to go next. The public input has been broad, and included with your packet, which has been publicly available for 10 days or so, was both a summation of the kinds of comments and also the verbatim, verbatim comments. We also had a number of graphs that illustrated leanings for different groups, and as you would guess, there's everything, which is not surprising and good, actually. It included things like safety, safety for the riders, safety for the public that might be around the riders, safety, talking about things like helmets, which are not required on bicycles in Colorado, as you probably know. How fast do they go? Where do you use them? Those kinds of questions came up. What about conflicts in the parks, where we have trails that are used by other, other folks as well? Parking, how do you park it? Where do you park it? How do you keep it out of the way so it doesn't interfere with other people trying to use the public way and the public sidewalks? How do we encourage people to do the right thing? A lot of this, in many ways, just comes down to respecting other human beings and doing what most people would think is the right thing, and I'll talk more about that in a minute. From a traffic standpoint, there were pros and cons. It could reduce congestion. It also can, creates new conflicts or more of different kinds of modes of transportation, which can be a challenge, and one of the reasons that we're here to discuss it tonight. Some mentioned that it could be good for big events, where there's a lot of people coming, you may not have a lot of parking, it can get more people in and out without, out of having to use the traffic lanes and backup traffic and have parking issues. There were questions related to RTD. Where do you park at the RTD facilities? But more often, it came up, this would be a good way to get to some of the RTD facilities, bus facilities, light rail facilities as well. There was the question about specific locations. Well, maybe these would be really good in the Belmar area or on the Union Corridor or, and other kinds of ideas that came up, and I'll talk more about that in a little bit. Reducing air pollution, the cost, it's a relatively cheap form of transportation, and that could be good. It's also a form of transportation that doesn't have a lot of upfront capital costs, so it can serve people who don't have automobiles. So, the comments were, were varied, as you would guess, and I think very helpful. One of the things we ask people to do is identify locations where they might want to pick up one of these devices or drop one off, and this map illustrates the response we got. Of course, this is just the people who chose to, to provide information, but it's interestingly illustrative in two ways. One is that there's red dots all over the city, so, so at least somebody thought they needed a, a vehicle or wanted a vehicle someplace in the city, almost everywhere, and, and a few outside of the city, in Morrison. The size of the dot indicated the number of people who indicated they might want to pick up or drop off at that particular location, and there's some messages there too, I think. You can see the downtown Lakewood area, which is, I don't think I'm supposed to do this, but I'm going to use the arrow anyway, because you all can't see it, I don't think. I'm not sure if you can. But it's, it's around Belmar and Lakewood City Commons, and then on down west, that's probably Colorado Christian University. There's a couple of big dots over on Union and Alameda, up in the Union Square area. The Denver West, Colorado Mills area, and then we had some along the W-line as well at some of the major stations. So, that was helpful, general information as well. I want to talk a little bit about the proposal that you're going to hear tonight, and before I talk about how that's structured in any detail, I want to define a few things. As I said earlier, we don't even know what to call this whole mode, or, or part of the transportation industry, so I want to make sure that we're all talking about the same thing. The first word is going to be device, and that's the thing that you ride on. Could be a scooter, could be a bike. That's what most of us will think of today. It may evolve over time. The rider is the person who rides on the device. Those two are the easy, clear ones. The licensee, which will be a major part of the discussion tonight, is a, is a transportation company. It's the company that owns the scooters and provides them out to the general public for the public's use, or the bicycle provider. It's available for general use. It's a company whose, whose, whose goal is to provide transportation devices. It's a commercial enterprise. A provider includes the licensees, so it includes all those companies that I just mentioned, but it also includes some other entities that may provide devices but wouldn't be in the transportation industry and transportation providing business primarily. They'd have some other pre-existing relationship with whoever they provide devices to. A few examples, there's already at least one landlord in the City of Lakewood that provides bicycles for shared use by its tenants. That would not be a licensee because they're not a because they're not a commercial transportation company. They have this pre-existing relationship with their tenants, so they, but they would be a provider. An employer might do the same thing, provide devices to its employees. A college or university might provide devices to their students and faculty. Those are the other providers that'll be treated a little differently in this proposal than the licensee providers that I'll speak mostly about tonight. There would be two components to this proposal. One would be some changes to your municipal code through an ordinance. And that would be the time, as the mayor said earlier, when there would be a public comment on a specific detailed changes to the, to the law, basically, to the city's municipal code. One of the things that municipal code would provide for is a license for these transportation companies and how that would be structured. So those are things to come down the road. I won't get into any more detail on those. However, I will talk a little bit about a number of components, some of which will apply to licensees, some of which will apply to all riders, regardless of who provides their vehicle or their devices. Some will apply, or apply to all riders, and I'll distinguish all those as we go. I'm going to go through 11 different components, some of them in a little more detail than others. And I'll go through each of these individually, and this is, this is the slide I'll leave up at the end. And you're welcome, obviously, to ask questions about any of the 11. My hope is that we'll have some relatively clear direction on what to do with those 11 in addition to whether or not to use this ordinance license strategy in order to manage this part of the transportation system. So let's start with licenses. And the licensors are going to, are not a license plate on the devices. I need to make that distinction. In fact, vehicles that are required to have license plates are not in this discussion. They already have laws, they're already dealt with, they're automobiles and trucks, and motorcycles, those kinds of things. So not a license plate in that sense. This is a piece of paper that gives a company the, the rules of the road for how they're going to manage their, their equipment. It'd be the commercial transportation entities. I already mentioned that. And not the others, like the school providing it to their students. One of the major discussion points is where are these devices ridden? And as I go through these slides, you're going to see some words in green, all riders in this case, meaning that what I'm about to talk about would apply to all riders, regardless if their riders using devices provided by a licensee or from some other provider. So bicyclist, it doesn't really matter where you get your bicycle. You're going to have to follow the same rules. And that's part of the idea here, is to make this as intuitive and consistent as we can so that everybody will understand the rules of the road. And most of these, well, these devices are most bike-like when you think of the current and historic transportation system. They're faster than pedestrians. They're slower and don't have the protection or mass of an automobile. So they're in between those two. They're more like a bike. So for the most part, most of what you're going to hear tonight is to use these devices like bicycles are used. It seems to make the most sense, both because there's some history and also because there's some rules around that already. This is the, this is the common sense part. If everybody treats everybody nice, we're going to be okay, and we don't really need to worry about the rules. But we'll end up with some rules anyway. And, and the rules will be designed to try to help people remember to be safe and reasonable and prudent in, in the way they operate the devices. There needs to be some kind of a yield hierarchy, and we already have one in the world. You'll remember, often, you'll see signs where the bicyclists are supposed to yield to pedestrians, and bicyclists are also supposed to yield to equestrians. Those kinds of yield regulations would be appropriate. We do have some challenges, though. Our infrastructure's not complete. If you even think about Garrison, which is one of our streets with the most complete bike lanes on it, there are gaps. There are places where the bike lanes don't exist for a variety of reasons. They're not really important what the reasons are tonight. There are places where we don't have sidewalks, and we need a place for pedestrians. We need a place for bicyclists as well. So we'll talk about those kinds of things a little bit. There may be some prohibitions. For instance, a, a, one of the areas that you might think of a little bit differently in Lakewood than others is Belmar. In Belmar, if you think about the sidewalks, we have a higher pedestrian population than in most of Lakewood. We have store doors that open out into the pedestrian way. Well, if you're a pedestrian, you can stop pretty quickly. We have planters, and we have benches and bicycle racks and all kinds of things. The streets are relatively narrow and very low speed. So in that particular case, it might make more sense to have these devices generally on the street, no pedestrians, low-speed vehicles, rather than on the sidewalks, where there's more pedestrians and more other kinds of obstructions and activity going on, and more distractions, frankly, for the pedestrians, so they may not be paying as much attention as they might other places. So that might be an area where it makes sense to prohibit the use of these devices on the sidewalks. Generally around town, that's probably not the case, primarily because of the discontinuity in our infrastructure today. Property owners, obviously, can restrict or prohibit these kind of devices on their property. So if, if we think of a large campus of some sort, that owner could just say, no, not, not on our property, and, and the providers would have to respect that. So bicycle lanes would probably be first priority location for these kind of devices. They're, especially the electric assist vehicles. They, they're relatively quick compared to pedestrians. So these vehicles you see here are on bike lanes. They're comparable in speed to bicyclists. Their mass is similar to bikes, that kind of thing. But there are places where we have major roadways, such as this one. I think this is part of Kipling. And we have an adjacent or nearby shared-use path. And the shared-use paths are specifically designed to be shared by different modes. We have historically thought about that as being a bicycle and a pedestrian, but this could be also the other kinds of devices that we're talking about. In this particular case, a portion of Alameda, there are some options. Some riders may want to be on the, the off-street shared-use path, which is the concrete that's white to the left side of the roadway, away from the higher-speed traffic. Others may choose to be on the roadway on the paved shoulder, where they don't have to deal with the curves and some of the driveways and handle the streets a little bit differently. You can think about bicyclists that like to go over the hogback. They tend to want to ride on the shoulder. They're those kinds of bicyclists. And I don't mean that in a negative way at all. It's just that they're more comfortable on the asphalt pavement, which can be smoother. They're with the traffic. For them, they feel safer, because the traffic sees them. There's just different kinds of decisions there to be made. And those options are good. So let's go to parking. This is probably the second most interested or interesting area for people, in addition to where to ride, is how to park. The, the first point here, and again, this would apply to all riders, is to park these things standing up. They take less space. They're less likely to be in obstruction. They actually look neater when they're standing rather than laying down. In some cases, there may be designated parking areas. I'll show you an example here in a minute that RTD is beginning to implement around the metropolitan area. Clearly, one of the goals is to have a minimal impact on other users of the sidewalk area and to protect the accessible route so that people who need an accessible route can, can still have one. All of those things can be accomplished. Here's a couple of examples in the upper right, some bicycles that are these kinds of devices, provided by these kind of providers, are near a bicycle rack. Some of them are next to the bicycle rack, some are on the fence. And then in the left picture, those, those scooters are not parked in any particular parking place, but notice that they're just before or just after a bus shelter. So that's an already obstructed part of the walk. It makes some sense to park them there instead of a little bit further to the right in this photo, where they'd be obstructing the pedestrian path. Sometimes, it may mean parking off the sidewalk, where there's not much of an option for being on the sidewalk. Although, in many cases, parallel to the edge of a sidewalk and at the edge of the sidewalk might also work just fine. Another example, out of the, the accessible roadway, which would include that red area on the, on the ramp, but still close by. And this is a photo of one of those RTD areas. The white wording says Bike and Scooter Share, and then it has symbols of those two things. And then the yellow indicates the area where RTD would like to have them parked. Interestingly, the bike that's real close isn't quite parked there, but I should, I should explain that that's a bike rack off to the right side of the picture. So that's okay. Now, let's talk about quantities. This can be a question that's interesting as well. This discussion really only applies to the licensees. So there's got to be some kind of way to establish how many of these are going to be in the community. And there's two goals there, really. The primary goal is to make sure there's enough, but not too many, for how many people want to use. We want them to get used regularly enough that they're, they're, they're not just lying around, becoming a eyesore. And the companies actually want the exact same thing. Their goal is to have their vehicles used so that they're receiving some income. So our proposal is to determine that by actual usage. Let me use, just use an example to explain. Say, a company has scooters, and we set some kind of a threshold range of how many scooter rides per day need to occur. And as long as that's the case, that company's scooters are ridden that many times per day on average, then they've got the right number of scooters. If their, their number of rides per day starts to go up, then let's let them have a few more scooters so that they're back in that same threshold range. But if their rides per scooter starts to go down, they're not being used as much, then let's have them pull in a little bit and not have quite as many out on the streets and available to the public. So it's really a way for the public to make the determination on how many different devices by each provider are out there in the street. In the street's a poor term. Out there, available to the public. They may, they're probably not in the street. The, the other, the other part of that is that it allows a way to make sure that we're managing on both ends. And it, and it would be dynamic over time. So while it may start off at a certain number, as the data continues to come in, we'll see if we need to have a provider allowed to provide more devices or required to reduce the number of devices. It also provides a way to start fair. What we'd like to also avoid is in the initial deployment, some, some particular provider, who is extremely fond of Lakewood flooding the market and perhaps taking advantage of another situation where a provider maybe isn't that interested. Over time, the public's going to decide which provider they want and which, or providers, they don't, it's not going to be restricted to one, and how many vehicles. Well, how do we do it initially before we have any data? We're, we're probably going to just need to come up with a number and then divide it among the licensees and then get it started. And that's, that's the thought. And then over time, and it may not take a long time. The data will come in pretty rapidly, and we'll be able to make those adjustments and require the providers to reduce their fleet or give them the opportunity to increase their fleet from actual data. This approach also has the advantage of being a shared goal with the providers. They want the same thing, as I mentioned earlier, because this allows them to optimize revenues, because they get more devices if they're used more often, and they won't get as many devices if they're not as used often. Another question is, where do you put them? How do you distribute the devices around the community? And this is really a licensee question. We would ask each licensee to propose a plan on how to make that distribution decision. And those plans may evolve a little bit over time. Again, we want this to be driven primarily by the consumer, by the folks who live in Lakewood and would operate them in Lakewood. So it'll take a little bit of time to shake this out, probably. And it can be a, a dynamic thing as well as people begin to use the devices. With each redistribution, which for many of these devices is every single night, they pick all the devices up, and they make sure they're charged, if they're electrical, and then they redistribute these. Another advantage of that is that they don't sit for days in one place unused. So there's a lot of advantages to this redistribution approach. And most of the providers do this already. With that pickup, there's, there would be a visual inspection or basic test of the device to make sure it's, it's functionally operational. A second comment or component related to this is actual retrieval of the devices. And this would apply to all providers. This might be a situation where a device is broken. It needs to be picked up and just taken out of the system. It might be a system where, or a situation where one's reported as poorly parked. The provider needs to go out and park it properly or remove it again. If one's left unused for a period of time, they may need to pick it up. So there would be time limits for those kinds of activities by the providers. Those were the longest, most detailed discussions I'll probably have. This next one has to do with some other safety issues. A lot of what we've already talked about deals with safety. These devices have various certifications that the federal government has. We'd require those. They'd have to be inspected periodically. And the devices would have an identification on them. And this is natural, anyway, for the licensees, because you need to be able to identify which devices your licensee has available to you. But that also allows somebody to report a poorly parked or a broken device as well. So there's some advantages to the communities. We also want them to cooperate with the police. They probably would, anyway. But the, the licensees have some information about where their vehicles went, who had leased the vehicle for that period of time. And if there's an incident, the police department ought to be able to go to the licensee and gather that kind of information just so they can get the facts and not have to try to track something down something down from a vehicle that was left, crashed and no one around. I've mentioned data several times, and this would probably be a little bit flexible and evolve over time as well, but we want to understand the usage, we want to be able to provide information to the police department, we want to know where the, the vehicles are traveling, we want to know where they're being picked up and dropped off. Most of the pickup, drop off and travel route information is really for future city of Lakewood infrastructure decisions. It wouldn't make infrastructure decisions, but it would be input towards infrastructure decisions. So as a, as an example, if the city council's thinking about the capital improvement program some year and one option might be a bike lane over here and another might be a bike lane over here, and we have a lot of data that says this one's used a lot more, that might be one of the inputs into the decision-making process. There are some special program possibilities, some of the providers or some of the licensees actually have these now. And I don't know, I don't think we talked about this last time, but these are options that the city council could consider requiring of the licensees. One might be that the riders who do not have a credit or debit card have some kind of a program for those folks. Generally, these systems work by setting, setting up an account with the licensee, the account's based on a credit card or debit card, that's how things are paid, but you don't show your card every time, you've got an account with the, the licensee that they use. You use your smartphone, you use your smartphone to unlock the device, activate their collection from your credit card until your trip's done, and then you lock the device back up and end your trip and end your costs. So the general model is that you have to have a debit or a credit card. There are options where that's not the case for those who do not have those cards. Similarly, with a smartphone, there can be options without, for those who do not have a smartphone to use the system, it just takes a little different approach and some providers have that already. Some of the licensees also have low income programs where they provide a reduced rate for people who, who have a low income. Generally, maybe entirely, the low income isn't determined by us or the provider, it's the provider relying on some already existing program. There's federal programs, there's state programs that identify folks who have less income than some particular level and they'll, they'll just say typically, the licensee will say, if you qualify for program X or Y or Z, then you qualify for a low income, lower cost program. This is going to be important, an important part, partly because we want people to just use common sense and be respectful of each other. There's already a lot of education that's on the applications, on the smartphones for the, the licensees and the provide, other providers. We would want to make sure that that exists and we would probably want to supplement it because we have an interest in also educating the general public so that they know, unlike the way it was in Denver for a long time, these things aren't exclusively restricted to only sidewalks. Now Denver's changed that and they're allowed in bike lanes now. But for a while, they were only allowed, the scooters were only allowed on sidewalks in Denver. That's not the case, it's not the proposed case here, but we need to make sure that people are aware of that. So I think we have a common interest with the providers and the licensees, but we have a broader interest also because we have the general public education in addition to the users' education or the riders' education. So the licensees would educate their riders, that's through their app generally, but the city would probably also have an education program for the riders, but also the rest of the general public. We'll probably work with RTD and others on that kind of a program and it'll be really important. And in many ways, this is a continuation of some of the transportation education that we've already initiated. You may have seen over the last year or so, we've done some bicycle-related education classes where bicyclists and people who drive motor vehicles around bicyclists had the opportunity to learn a little bit more about how each worked and how they could protect themselves if they were on a bicycle and how the automobile driver could be a little more aware, those kinds of things. We've also more recently been doing a program to discourage distracted driving, you've probably seen the variable message signs on some of the major roadways. So we have this kind of ongoing transportation education program for a variety of reasons, and this would be another component. There are always remedies and enforcement provisions, and we think perhaps in this case, some incentive and disincentive aspects may be appropriate as well. The riders will see this in a variety of ways, the education program that I just described, the licensees may have obligations in their license to do things with their riders. And then of course, if worse comes to worse, the police department will issue citations. Because we're proposing a license, we'll be able to use the license as a method to create some, some remedies and some disincentives and incentives for the licensees. Maybe an example would be helpful. If poor parking is a problem, we'd like the riders who are the poor parkers to have a disincentive to do that, or maybe an incentive to park properly. The licensee might find a way to do that. If you, if you total up some number of points by doing things right, you might get a discount for a period of time or something like that. That's kind of an arbitrary example, but that's the idea is to try to find a variety of ways to incent good behavior. And this will probably have to be flexible as we go to. This is the last one. There'll be some license, other license requirements, things you would probably suspect, this will be at the back end, but there'll be a liability waiver, some insurance and indemnification things to protect the city and the general public. There will be a, a license fee to cover just the cost of processing the license. The city's 3% tax by ordinance would already apply to these kinds of activities. There may be a bond, for instance. I'm not sure yet whether this is a great idea or not, we're working on this one, but there may be reason to require the licensees to provide a bond so that if they go out of business and leave vehicles scattered around, somebody can go collect those. That's probably an unlikely need, but it's a possibility. And finally, there may be advertising on devices today, they only have information about who the licensee is. At some point, somebody may want to expand that. Right now, we're not suggesting that advertising be used on these vehicles all over town, at least for the time being. This is my promised last slide, and at this point, I will stop and thank you for your attention and, and we'll look forward to answering any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hutchison. So as we start to look at the direction that you need, just help me, help us get a better understanding as far as recommendations, you have one through 11, and are you looking for separate input or what would be easiest?
Thank you, Mayor. It's not necessary that, that I get separate input on each one of these. In fact, one, one option at your discretion, Mayor, might be to look for the exceptions. This is kind of a package with, with number eight being a little bit different, and I'll come back to that in just a second because those are three possible programs that you may or may not be interested in. But regardless of what happens on number eight, the special program possibilities, all the rest of that's kind of a package presented as a whole, described in pieces, really mostly just so that it's somewhat organized. Is that helpful?
Yeah. Yep, that's helpful. So it looks like we have quite a few questions. I would just say for myself, I, I've seen, you know, I think we've seen the good and the bad and maybe the, even the ugly. I think these could provide some good opportunities for some in our community. And for what it's worth, I think it might be an opportunity for us even just to pilot it, but to create some sort of ability. I think you laid out a great framework, especially by going out, not only, you know, gauging the interest of our community and, and the concerns of our community, but including the industry as well. And that's a, it's a big step, I think, compared to other communities where we've seen maybe that not happen. So I would encourage, at least for me, encourage council to look at that and see if we can go into a, a pilot phase. Ms. Franks?
Thanks, Mayor Paul. I wanted to say how well organized, it felt like I was taking a trip down kind of all the questions you'd normally ask, so thank you, it was very well organized and very helpful. The two that I want to focus on is number four and number seven. They're really both related to data, so to get that device quantity and kind of for the competition component of that. Have you seen how other, are any other municipalities doing that in order to control quantities? And how do they ensure the data integrity? Is it a self-reported or is it direct connect where we get nightly feeds? I want to understand how we would make sure that the quantities were accurate, that we were giving them the feedback and making sure the competition was true and fair.
Thank you. The, the answer to the first question is yes, there are other communities that have begun to use the same kind of a, a dynamic quantitative model based on.
I should, on my microphone.
Yeah, thank you, I was gonna say Elon.
It's not actually a secret. That's all the humor I've got for you tonight, and it wasn't much. There are other communities that are using this kind of an approach and, and it's, it's, everything is early. These haven't even been around a year and a half yet, anywhere in the nation really. So we think it's going to work really well. These companies have a tremendous amount of data and they have it for their purposes. And what we're asking for is data that they need for their purposes, so they first of all have a motivation to get it as right as they can get it. The, the, the data verification, the integrity question, I'm not sure we know the complete answer to that yet. I suspect if nothing else, we would probably do some random checking, which is not hard to do when they advertise on their application where all the devices are at any particular moment. But I, I think our interests are coincidental enough that, that I'm not going to be real worried about data integrity, but it is, does deserve some, some checking.
Well, and I think during the stage win competition, I think during that early kind of seeding phase, it's just more important at that time because you really are trying to make sure that if we move forward with this, that the community really does pick the winners. You know, that it's the companies that provide the best service, put them in the right locations, have good service. So I think that it's more concerning for me on the front end to make sure that the true winners are being picked by the community. And then I think the other one was for the data sharing on, that really is for Lakewood's benefit. Will that be data that will amass year over year so we can follow trends?
Yes, yes, and I think trends are going to be very important, particularly because the, my expectation, my guess, maybe might be more accurate, is that usage will continue to climb. This is still pretty new. I think we'll find people finding that it's more comfortable as different types of devices are introduced. Those will be for different market segments. And so I think the trends are going to be very important and we'll certainly keep track.
Absolutely. And I think it's also important to see how it, if we can see regionally, like how much use does it get in our hillier parts of the city versus not? Because I, I work downtown and I'm watching the demographic change substantially. I'm also watching, you know, sort of the engagement from the pedestrians and it's kind of a, a process of everybody getting used to one another. So having that year-over-year demographics and also geographic locations. And that, that's really the only questions I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. And you took the words right out of my mouth. I actually was going to suggest a pilot program as well with the look back perhaps in one year to see how this would need to be tweaked or changed. I'd like to see us have a conservative approach in that perhaps initially when we're looking at the licensees, we keep it at a modest number until we have a real idea what the impact on our streets and sidewalks and is going to be, rather than to have hundreds of them with, without a little idea ahead of time. It's kind of funny, we were in China about 25 years ago in Beijing and everybody rode bicycles, they didn't have autos. And I guess what's old is new again, people are going back to bikes. I do have a few questions. Do other cities license the individual drivers of these to see that they have actually done the education or anything like that? Or is only the business itself that puts it on the app?
I think it's very much like a bicycle today, so that they're, the riders not licensed except that they do have to go through the educational steps on the app, which generally are the informational components of where do you ride, where do you park, those kinds of things, and some safety-related information.
Okay. Is there any liability to the city if somebody hurts another person on Lakewood property?
It'd be the same as any other kind of transportation mode.
I noticed on page seven here. And as you said a few times, is the hopes that people will use common sense and courtesy. There is one place in here where we're talking about to prohibit distracted and impaired riding. I totally think that's appropriate, but we can't enforce it really, or can we? What is your take on that?
I didn't, I'm not sure the police department's here for that kind of a question. There are, there are circumstances where that can be addressed, but you have to both be timely and have the person. So I, I think that, I think that'll be a challenge, just like it is today with, with motor vehicles. We have a lot more distracted drivers in motor vehicles than we stop from being distracted drivers, unfortunately.
Right. The state legislature is actually looking at a bill regarding our iPhones and texting while you're driving. Just off the cuff, I'm hard, it's hard for me to pass something that we know we really can't enforce. It's nice to have it in there, but I, I can see both sides of it. I noticed in hearing, in the presentation also, it said that you needed to be 18 years of age.
That's generally the requirement of the licensees. It's not proposed as, as a city requirement, just like a, a elementary school kid could ride a bicycle. But the licensees recognize that their, their liability is reduced by having a more competent rider. And there's pros and cons to that. 18 eliminates the most high school kids who, who might, instead of having to be driven by yet another car going to the high school, could, could take a bicycle or a scooter. But at the same time, it, it probably keeps the riders a little bit, to being a little bit a safer, safer ridership group.
Just because I'm a little ignorant of this, when you go into your app in order to get one of the devices and you do the education, how do they verify your age on there?
I don't think they all do it the same way. My recollection, and this may be evolving as well, as much of this is, but my recollection is that some just say you have to and you have to check a box, just like you do with other software that says, I read all this and it all applies. There may be some that, that want a scan of a driver's license, but I'm not sure that that's frequent.
The devices on page eight, we're talking about using shared path, paths, the vehicle lanes in some cases and sidewalks. I have a little concern for both the, the person on these devices and for the automobile driver, that we're setting both of them up for accidents. As you mentioned, these are brand new and it's going to take people a while to understand that the asphalt was originally designed for autos. And now we're going to have these electric devices on them with folks that we really can't prove if they're 18, better or worse. I'm just throwing that out there, Jay. It's a little bit of a concern for me.
And, and a lot of that relates back to my comments about our infrastructure being discontinuous. If, if, if everything that we've planned for was all in place today, that we'd be able to have better separation by different, of different modes of travel. We're just not there yet. So if you think about going up Garrison where there's often a bike lane, once you get to Colfax, you go into the Glens, there's never going to be a bike lane, there's never going to be a sidewalk, but the traffic's very low and very slow. Bicycles have driven on street pavements as long as we've had street pavements and bicycles. So while there may be more, there probably will be over time anyway. Now that there are electric-assist bicycles, there are more privately-owned bicycles on those facilities as well. So I think we're in this transition that, that's going to happen and this is a part of that transition that we can help make as safe as possible.
Right, I understand.
Appreciate that.
And I'm just throwing this out there, I wonder if there's been any consideration of maybe having these devices only in certain areas of the city and then off limits in certain areas as well? I don't know. I don't even know what, what would define the appropriate area.
That is something that we, that we've thought about, and there was actually a proposal to do a pilot project in a limited geographical area. And where we've ended up with our recommendation is, is kind of in two parts. There may be places where it's inappropriate and the property owners can decide that. For instance, if Colorado Christian University decides they don't want scooters on their campus, they can say no scooters. Or Taruma BCT can say that on their property or, or pick another large property owner. On, on the other hand, a limited geographic area for a pilot project, which isn't exactly your point, but for a pilot project would probably not tell us really what's going to happen when the limited geographic area is removed. We may learn that that makes some sense. So far, the only area that we found, that we think maybe should be treated differently geographically is Belmar where, as I described earlier, but we'll see.
I agree. And I think I mentioned that maybe have a cap on the number of licenses initially.
And maybe I should clarify that, I'm glad you brought that up again. Are you talking about the number of devices that are actually available to the public? Okay, great, thank you.
Right, right. I can see this just going crazy initially before we have an opportunity to have that yearly look back or whatever we decide is the appropriate time. And after reading through this, there's a lot of, there's going to be a lot of work for somebody in the city. Is this going to require another FTE or please talk about that?
I don't think so, for a couple, couple of reasons. One is the city council in the last couple of years approved alternative transportation coordinator position, which was an additional FTE in the Transportation Engineering Division. And Christina is very interested and active in this process. I'm just kind of the spokesman. She's really doing a lot of the work. And she's been in touch with the providers, she participated in the public process so she could hear all sides of all of these kinds of discussions. She's been all, in all the discussions about the proposal that you've heard tonight. And so I don't, I don't think we're going to need another person. For, for this initial license period, when the initial applications come in, it's going to be a little more intensive because we're going to need to go through each licensee's application pretty closely and thoughtfully. Once the system's in place, I think it'll be relatively low demand. We'll need to verify data, we'll need to get data, try to figure out what it all means, but I don't think it's going to require another FTE.
Okay, I'm almost done. On page 14, it talks about riders with low income and that there's a way to try and look at that. You are not suggesting that the city will be subsidizing these, are you?
No, thank you. No, this would be a program where the, the licensee just provides it at a lower rate. It's not a difference made up by the city.
Okay. And my last comment and question is on page 15, and I don't see it right in front of me. There's reference to unacceptable behavior. And that perhaps needs to be defined, number one, what that means really? And do we have any idea what experiences other cities have had with unacceptable behavior and how have they handled it?
Unacceptable behavior by the riders?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. And, and it's generally been the kind of thing you would expect with any kind of a transportation incident. If, if, if it, if it results in injury, then somebody's going to do an investigation from the police department and there'll be a decision made on whether or not to follow through with a citation and that sort of thing. If there's damage to somebody's property, if it's the licensee's property, they'll have to decide what to do. If it's damage to somebody else's property, the, the police can be brought in as well. So it's, it's not unlike any other kind of incident in, in the transportation world.
Thank you. May I suggest that in parentheses, we add some of those things so that it has a clear definition to it?
We actually are going to have to do a lot of definitional work when we get down to writing law, and we haven't done that yet. But with the drafting of an ordinance, assuming we go forward from tonight, we'll do that pretty carefully.
Thank you.
Sure. And one of the things that has been mentioned a couple of times is, is a pilot period of time, and I think that's a great idea. And in fact, these licenses wouldn't be perpetual. I don't think I mentioned that, but my expectation is they might be an annual license. In many cases, they might be easily renewable, but that provides a couple of things. One, it provides that, it creates a pilot project time without having to worry about some other rules. And the second thing it does is allow some adjustment as the industry continues to evolve. So the licenses, while I don't think they would change dramatically year to year, there may be provisions that do change, based on what we learn, based on changes in the industry, based on the change in the kinds of vehicles that are available. We'll see. But I think that'll provide that kind of a, a tool.
Mr. Abel?
Thank you, Mayor. Very nice presentation, Jay. I had to scramble to find something to ask a question or two about. The discontinuity, would that eventually result in a need for signage? I mean, there are places on Colfax, we don't want them riding on the sidewalk, there are places on Colfax, we don't want them riding on the streets because of the danger, I think. Some of the sidewalks are teeth-jarring, to say the least. So would that require some work on figuring out what routes we'd like to apply them on, and signage to get them around?
Perhaps.
I love that answer.
Yeah, it's, it's not a lot of value, but, but here's the reason I say it that way. Most people will figure out that it's a lot easier to ride on 14th than it is to ride on Colfax. And then, if you need to get to Colfax, you come up the street right by where you are. That's what bicyclists tend to do now. What look like sidewalks along Colfax sometimes aren't actually sidewalks, they're somebody's private property that come clear out to the curb. So that's not where we want them either, unless the owner wants them there. So in many cases, I think what we'll find, and I am hypothesizing, is that people will find out where it's safest to ride. So they'll get away from the higher-speed streets unless they have an adjacent shared-use path, and they'll find an alternative route. If we find that, that we have a real problem, we'll probably deal with that in some fashion, and signage is one way. One of the places that we already do that with signage is in the parks, where motorized vehicles are not allowed. I think that's universal, but let's say generally, they're not, motorized vehicles are not allowed in the parks. Well, an e-assist scooter or an e-assist bike is a motorized vehicle. So generally, they're not allowed there. And that's really, that's a matter of managing potential conflicts, because there's a higher density of pedestrians and other kinds of uses. I know you've heard recently about Bear Creek, the Bear Creek Trail as being one of the locations where this is a challenge. Generally, that would still apply. Working with the Community Resources Department, we've identified a small number of places where we need to have more conversations about should, for transportation purposes, these devices be allowed to go through a park, not around a park, but through a park, because that's the natural transportation route. That would have to be managed by signage, because the current signage is, is fairly explicit, that, that they're not allowed there. So this is, again, probably an area we're going to have to learn some things, but that certainly may be one of the tools we need to use.
Another concern comes from the rate of movement, I guess. If scooters are in bicycle lanes, bicycles move faster than they do, and what effect would that have on safety for both? And then, there was, when Ms. Franks got her electric bike, about that time, there were folks talking about not, it not being compatible with non-electric bicycles, or non-assisted bicycles. So is that still an issue? Perhaps we'll have some bicycle folks here tonight to talk about that. But in your research, has that shown up as an issue?
There's always an issue when you have speed differential. That's one of the reasons that there's a minimum speed on the interstate highways. If somebody's going 30 miles an hour on a 75 mile an hour road, there's a much higher likelihood of, of a crash. Similarly, if the mass of the vehicles is different, somebody wins and somebody loses. That's what happens with motorcycle car accidents, for example. Because these devices are more similar to bikes we're used to than they are to pedestrians or to cars, faster than pedestrians, slower, and much less mass than an automobile, we're thinking bicycles is the way to go. Is there variation? Just like you pointed out there, absolutely is. I think what we're learning, though, is as people are making choices about, "What do I need for this transportation trip? Do I need an automobile? Well, maybe not. Do I need a basket on a bike? Maybe, maybe not. Maybe I can use a scooter." We're going to see a, a more filled-out spectrum of speeds. Interestingly, the scooters and the e-bikes aren't far apart in speed. And bicyclists on a non-electric-assist bike, who is an avid bicyclist, can go almost as fast as an e-assist bike or an e-assist scooter can go. They're a few miles an hour apart on the upper end of the, the e-assist range that most of these licensees have. There's one classification of bicycle, of electric bicycle, that's higher, but it has a whole different set of rules under state law, and it's not used by the licensees. So how, how fast someone chooses to operate one of these vehicles is the other part of that. And some will choose slower, and some will choose faster, and we kind of fall back then again to better that they be separated as much as possible from pedestrians and heavy cars, but they're going to have to pay attention to each other as well. So it's certainly a potential issue. I'm not sure there's a better solution.
I'm sure if there is, you'll find it. In fact, we expect that. The other thing is about insurance. Who monitors compliance? Who will come up with the figures on what's, what's needed? Or is that fairly standard from city to city?
It's probably pretty standard. We'll certainly consult with the city attorney's office and our risk management folks, and require the licensees the appropriate amount of insurance.
Thank you. Again, great job.
Thank you.
Ms. Goodwin?
Thank you. Phenomenal job figuring out a way to introduce this emerging technology in Lakewood. I had a chance to talk to someone in Aurora about some of the challenges that they saw in their community when scooters and bikes and all these shared dockless micro-mobility options came into play. And I discussed your recommendations, and it sounds like there, it's going to address pretty much all of the challenges that they saw. So I really appreciate all the time and work that you put into this. Just have a quick question. The biggest issue that they brought up was, this is going to shock everyone, parking, and people parking them in people's yards or all different places. And I see that you have here that we're going to require that the licensee will pick up a poorly parked device within a specified amount of time. I would just like to see us nail that down and make sure it's reasonable, and, you know, I see we have 48 hours for the, if it's unused, so I'm not sure what the amount of time is, but I think that will be important.
It, it will be, and there'll be different amounts of time, probably for different circumstances. A device obstructing the accessible routes, a pretty important item, so it may be a couple of hours at, at the high end, as opposed to 48 hours for something that's just not working, and it's not in a good place, or maybe it'll be a shorter time. Those kind of details, you'll hear more about the, the next time we visit, assuming that we visit again on this topic. And we've been thinking about those, and, and I want to also credit Aurora. We've had the opportunity to learn from others' experience, including talking with Aurora. I mentioned the City of Lakewood's Alternative Transportation Coordinator a minute ago. She's been in touch with all kinds of folks, and it's been really helpful.
Great, thank you. And then, also, I would like to see us ask for, the option was number C, it was, letter C, including a low-income proposal from the licensees. And I think this is great. I agree with moving forward with your recommendation. I'd love to see us continue to complete our bike lanes as that came up. And then, finally, to the community, I know this is going to be a big transition for all of us, so I hope that we can just have an open dialogue and, as we work through this first year. So, thank you all.
Mr. Bita?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, thank you for the presentation that you obviously thought through and looked at a lot of the different issues, so appreciate it. Good job. I want to just go back to one, one issue here primarily, and that is liability. And I'm not convinced that the city is going to experience some additional exposure here that we may not now have. And let me tell you why I say that. First of all, this is a new industry, okay? So the rules aren't real clear. And when I say rules, I'm talking about the rules of liability. And those are, those are defined by the personal injury lawyers and their creativity, in part, okay? That's a fact. So we don't know what those are. Secondly, think about this, because it is a new industry, you're going to have, I mean, it's risky. I mean, people are going to get injured on these things, let's face it. They're going to be going 15 miles an hour, and they don't have helmets, and they're, you know, they're mixing with automobiles and bicycles and pedestrians, so there's going to be accidents. You know, it's inevitable. And, and so, there's no, I don't know that there's really a insurance, established insurance component here, like we do in automobiles. You know, we've got all this insure, automobile insurance that, that system that gets people covered. And if you have a, one of these, that scooters that, let's say, has a, has a mishap with an automobile, well, there'll be some automobile, potentially some automobile insurance. But what if they have two of these scooters that have a mishap, or they hit a, hit pedestrian, or they hit a standing, you know, a wall, or a, or a trash can, or a light post, or something like that? Now you're going to have, and there is no, you know, there is no insurance. And that, that opens create, you know, that opens some liability, in my mind, to the city, because we're going to be looked at as the deep pocket. When there isn't any other insurance to look around, they can't find anybody else to blame, then they're going to be looking at the city. It's, you know, it's just how it is. So I'm saying to you, you know, maybe, as you, as you, as we go down the road on this, and I'm, I mean, I think we should go do this, to make this technology available to our citizens, you know, see what, what kind of other insurance options are available. For example, one idea I would have would be something like a fishing license. You know, if you get a fishing license, 25 cents of that goes towards rescues, that if you're lost in the woods, they, they come and rescue you, and it, and it's insurance, basically, it's coverage, and it's very cheap. So something like that, kind of a no-fault, maybe, situation. So when everybody that rents one of these things, a, a few cents of their rental fee goes to an insurance fund that would protect them, because it not only protects the city, but it's also going to, some kind of minimum protection for our, for our folks, so that, you know, if they break an arm, or, you know, have some injuries, at least get some, maybe some minimal medical coverage for them, so at least, you know, get them to the emergency room or something. So it seems like it would be sort of responsible to kind of make sure our citizens are taken care of if they get hurt, but also, at the same time, self-preservation of the city, so, you know, maybe avoid some, some liability for us, so.
Great, those are helpful comments. We'll dig into that some more.
That's all, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Cox, do you want to add anything?
Just a, just a quick note. I have no doubt that Mr. Bita is right, that there will be people looking for the deep pocket, no matter what rules are in place. That's universal, I think. But this being a new industry that's catching on in some other places first, and we do have the opportunity to go to school on them, you know, you might see changes in governmental immunity, which would be a, a big factor in determining what liability we do have. And then remembering that, this won't, this won't stop everybody, but remembering that the city's relationship would be with the licensed, licensed companies, they'd have the relationship with the, the riders who have the obligation to use, do care. So there's a little bit of separation there, but we'll just have to see how it evolves.
All right, I have Mr. Skilling and Mr. Royball.
Thank you. I'll be really brief. The, on number three, for the parking issues, I had, in my own independent research, learned about the geo-fencing, so I think we should look at geo-fencing as part of that. And then, there's the incentivizing the, the companies to actually enforce that, or to invest in geo-fencing, or come up with some system, whether it's charging their own users. There's one deal that you read about where if they continue to charge the person if they don't park it in the right place, so the meter keeps ticking. So the way that we enforce that, we just increase the penalties. We won't have some of the issues that these other cities have with the scooters lying around everywhere and on the sidewalks in front of businesses, or the, the bikes that are out front of people's houses all the time, depending where they're at. If you just make it a harsher penalty, the, the companies will fix it. They'll, they'll certainly, whether it's the geo-fencing, or whether it's one of these other things, I think we need to significantly increase the teeth on the parking issues. I mentioned this last time, I'd like to have something with the helmets. I know I read your section on the helmets, I know we've talked about that briefly, but as part of the licensing, we can mandate that somehow the helmets are made available. I know that, I think it's, some of the scooter companies already have a deal where you can, it's really a hard process, but you have to contact them, and they send you a helmet, you got to pay for it, it's this whole process. But I, if there's anyone else that's doing anything with the helmets, just somehow making those available. It's different than, you know, some of the standard helmet laws, you know, those, we own the bicycle, we own the motorcycle, which is different than somebody who's in town for one day, who's never, who's not going to have a helmet. So I think we should, because that's where the injuries are going to happen. I mean, break your arm, okay, but you break your head. And then the only other thing that I had, and I'll perhaps disagree with some of my colleagues, but on number eight, with the special programs, I, I don't know if we really need to get that far into micromanaging what's going on with these things. I would assume that the market would insist that they offer these programs. They're trying to get to the widest amount of people possible. This is mobility options for people that maybe don't have a car, I'd assume that they would have that. I don't know if we want to go that far in making it mandatory that these companies offer things like all different technologies that they'd have to have, if they're not going to do a credit card or a standard app, that means they have to, some, what are they going to do, by paper, or, I mean, what does that look like? And I don't know if we want to be micromanaging that, it seems like the market would take care of that.
To your point, some of the providers already do have those kind of programs, they've figured out how to do them. Perhaps it's market-driven, perhaps it's driven by other communities, either way, they provide it universally.
Mr. Royball?
Thank you, Mayor. A few councillors have already brought a lot of my points out, but I just want to clarify a little bit. Councillor Goodwin brought in, when some of these scooters are parked in private property, and they're there for a while, and you call the, the company up, we need to create some kind of teeth where we give them a call, they don't respond, we pick up their bike and charge them a towing fee of some sort to get it off the streets. And I pretty much guarantee you, if you do it once and you take their bike or twice, I think they'll pay attention real quick. So that's, that's one, one objective. And the other one that councillor Bita brought up was insurance. And I want to bring this conversation up, and I know it's going to be an uncomfortable conversation, but with the city having more population, higher density, and you're getting these vehicles that are coming in, and everybody's pushing to try to get out of Lakewood, come into Lakewood, they're already trying to push the bikes off the streets because they want to get back, and then you bring into the mix is the scooters. I understand it's an alternative form of transportation, but one of the things that I want to look at, and maybe not mandated, but kind of strong recommendation, because I know what's going to happen. The person on the scooter, let's say, is, is a 16-year-old kid, and let's say he goes down and somebody hits him and runs, or something happens, and this poor young kid is in a hospital laid up with hundreds of thousands of dollars of insur, you know, of bills, and he's looking up and he can't pay for it. We got to find something for them that, to really help them out, or a little bit, or a recommendation. And that's where I miss councillor Harrison, because she would be able to answer these questions fairly quickly. But I just wanted to bring that up, maybe we can offer some alternatives or recommendations to kind of additional insurance to be able to help them. And then, the last thing that I wanted to talk about is obviously with insurance is safety. Safety is very important in a Safety is very important, and a lot of the stuff that I really, when I looked in Denver and I looked at other places that were actually providing this, is like, for example, during the winter months, you know, you have a lot of snow, the trucks are plowing it out of the way, and then all of a sudden, you know, what gives to get rid of that snow, to put it on the side, to be able to move the vehicles in and out until the snow melts, you have that, you know, bicycle, or, you know, the scooters that normally would go down the street, they can't go there because you've got a lot of snow. I mean, that's probably, you know, an example, but just kind of looking at the safety in the street, a lot of the stuff that I also look at, and again, I hope they're not texting while they're on a scooter. Just had to bring that up. But, you know, obviously, you know, I'm joking, but there is, you know, safety, 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 and being real responsible. So I guess, I'm just saying that I don't want people to get hurt. We need to do the best we can to make it the safest in the streets and the sidewalk for these guys, or we shouldn't provide them. You know, we need to provide the safety for them as much as we can. If we need to do barriers, we need to do wherever, let's get it done. Safety is of the essence. So I figured I just want to mention that, you know, wherever we can, and I know it's complicated throughout the city. Certain standards and parameters that we have in certain roads will accommodate that, others don't. But maybe we can continue looking at, kind of looking at through the hourglass, through the scooters. You know, I know we've looked at them through the bikes, I know we've looked through them through the cars and motorcycles. Maybe we should take a third look on the scooters to see if there's something we can do. Because I hate to have these folks get hit in the street. So, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Labir?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Jay, for your presentation, and thanks to all my colleagues for all their good comments, most of them were good. Just kidding. This is a little bit anecdotal, and I'll be brief, so we can move on to the next topic. But, you know, I've already seen at least two people get hit in crosswalks in the middle of intersections, and because of that, I just think it's probably an area where we should probably have some particular focus. And I don't know if that's, you know, education focused on, you know, how you cross intersections at sidewalks, with people making left turns, different, you know, right turns, different turns, whatever. Or signage, or specific rules that are explicit to that problem, but I know that's a typical problem in transportation, is the intersection is where people typically get hit. So I just thought I'd mention that. Thanks.
All right, well, thank you, council, and one thing I wanted to touch on, Ms. Johnson brought up, you know, the scope, or how many of these units should we have? And what I learned, because I thought, well, maybe we only start in a couple areas, really the market will tell the group right away where they're using them and where they're not, and it's not advantageous for them to leave them where they're not going to be used. So they'll be shifting them pretty fast, or with a minimum threshold of rides per day, if they don't meet two rides per day, say, then those could be gone. So that's one way. And then also, for folks, if you may not be that familiar, and, because they are somewhat new, when you do get off, you take a picture of it, and you send it, so folks know that it's left in a proper place and sitting upright. So there are different things that help to make it a little bit better a process, and I see on our list of folks who want to give some input are some industry folks, we might learn a little bit more. Ms. Franks?
Well, it sounds like we're going to have some type of a recommendation, where maybe it's a one-year licensing period or something like that. So I did one, I just was looking at some safety data, and I think it might be important for us to get periodic updates from maybe the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration. They're comparing kind of pedestrians, cyclists, you know, those types of injuries. And so if they track them either regionally, or even down to the city, it might be interesting to see if we can start to see any of those trends, which might inform how we need to get in front of the safety piece. So I think if we track some data along with them saying where they're being used, are we seeing any trends with regards to injuries? Because it looks like folks can just, it's running into immobile objects, it's running into each other, it's, you know, bike on car, so there's a lot of different variables. But maybe that other data point will help inform the discussion.
Thank you, and we've already been trying to track that. The data is incomplete at best. There's an LA study, but it only looks at information from two emergency departments, none of the urgent care, none of the other emergency departments. We have a pretty good study and thoroughness from Portland, but it's for a very, very short period of time during a pilot project. The CDC is going to do a study in Austin, actually they're using data from late last year, so they'll have some information whenever the CDC issues that, but it's only a two-month period, so we'll keep tracking those, and it certainly is an important piece to us as well. Thank you.
It's also a good opportunity, I think we need to have a greater conversation about traffic safety and pedestrian safety anyways. We've heard a lot about that, so this is another aspect of us to be able to get the word out to the community about safety for all folks. So Jay, it looks like we have some consensus, eight is the outlier. So outside of eight, is there any clarification that you need? And then we can go into eight, and eight is just either the low income, and we heard one, yes, or let the market figure it out. Two was without a smartphone, so make it available to folks who have a smartphone and don't. And then the other one was with or without credit cards. So, so I'm hearing a little bit more about maybe with the market, and I think as you proceed, I think these companies may already have programs. So that would be a possibility, and I think they already probably have programs for credit cards and non-credit card users. And then the last one was the smartphone. We want to encourage, I mean, I think it's important, most people almost have smartphones. Mr. Abel, though, had a flip phone for quite some time.
Not anymore.
Not anymore, so. I think let's look and maybe get that feedback, is that okay? All right. Ms. Goodwin?
Sorry, I think there was some confusion about which of the topic, what we were talking about, because I thought there was one about offering low-income discounts, and I think there is some interest in doing the low-income discount, not the other with the devices and all of that, but just the low-income.
I was getting nods of let the market deal with it, but potentially finding out what these companies could offer for low income. Because I think there is programs within that they have, that you operate, we may hear, I'm getting yeses. So it may be the market's best place to do that, rather than the city.
I guess the market typically doesn't offer low-income discounts on their own, so that's why.
Actually, not true. They do, they have programs, the operators. So I think we could learn a little bit more. But if you would like to bracket that, that's certainly a possibility, okay?
Thank you.
Because now, we're going to spin, we have three more comments. Ms. Johnson? Ms. Vincent?
I would just like to respectfully say, that needs to be an issue between the licensee and the user. I think we need to stay out of it.
Ms. Vincent?
That was my comment also, the market will drive it, they do have programs, and I caution against dictating something, for want of a better word, that would drive to a certain population.
And I certainly, I certainly understand, we want to make sure we have as much mobility for as many people, but again, I think we could, let's bracket that, but you're going to hear from these providers that they actually offer those programs already. Cool? Mr. Hutchinson, are we good? Enough clarity?
Yes, thank you very much.
All right. So let's go to the public input portion. So with this, this is your opportunity to be a part of the conversation. Three minutes, this little box here will go green for two and a half, at 30 seconds it'll go yellow, at the end it'll go red, and I'll politely ask you to wrap it up. If you don't want to be redundant and just say I agree or don't agree, that'd be fantastic as well. So, we have, Mr. Quinn, you're up first. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Powell, and members of City Council. Tom Quinn, Executive Director for the Alameda Corridor Business Improvement District. I will be brief as usual. I know you have a lot left on your agenda this evening, and it sounds like we're going to be moving forward with this. At the Alameda Corridor Business Improvement District, we started working with our partners at the city of Lakewood in 2016, looking at conventional bike-share technology. Technology moving, of course, at the speed of light, within a year, we were passed up by dockless technology, bringing us to where we are today. I think the report that staff has presented to you is an excellent, very thorough analysis, and really outlines best practices for you in moving forward to the next step in the process. Three quick points on this. We talk about viewing this as a pilot project, I think that's, you know, a good way to look at it. To make sure it's successful, the quantity of bikes is an important consideration, and the staff approach to that, I think, is a good one. Based on setting an initial number, and then basing it after that based on usage data. The reason for that is, people are only going to use bikes and scooters if they're convenient, they have to be available. If there's not enough of them, people are going to get frustrated because they can't get them. So there's a convenience factor in having enough of these around. So that's important, don't limit the number too much. Secondly, looking at the geographic areas, we want to have, we want to have this be citywide initially. That gives us the best picture of what actual, you know, where that usage is going to take place, what the level of public interest is in using dockless technology. That really gives us a more, a much more accurate picture. Maybe later we decide, hey, we need to limit this more geographically. But I think you start it out large, and then reduce it as time goes by, if that's, appears to be the right course of action. The other thing is, I'm not sure one year is really going to give us enough data to be able to judge the program. I would urge you, let's, you know, look at two years. I don't think there's anything wrong with looking back at the end of one year, but I would plan on two years. The reason is that it's relatively new to Lakewood, we want to have as accurate a data as possible. And that is, and the only other comment that I had was in response to councillor Abel's comment about the e-bikes and scooters, passing cyclists. You know, my biggest concern is the guys in spandex who shoot by me at 30 miles an hour, when I'm tooling along.
That was more my reference, I was wondering what happens when a scooter going 15 miles an hour gets set up on by a bicycle doing 35.
Yeah, that's a legitimate concern, yeah, with, literally, I call them the guys in spandex. I don't wear spandex, and that's for the good of the entire community, by the way. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you for that. Mr. Ash, Mr. Noblin, and then, Mr. Kerr. Might be able to ride faster than a scooter, I don't know. And then if you have not had a chance to sign up and you'd like to speak, please stop by the clerk and get signed in. Good evening.
Mr. Mayor, good evening, council. Most of my questions were answered by your question, so good you. But when I first saw that you were going to consider this as something for the city, my first thought was, I'm too old to have any comments about scooters. But after going through the presentation that was online, I did come up with some issues, and because you addressed most of them, I'm going to focus on my first one, which is Belmar, and I live very close to Belmar, and I spend a lot of time there. I think Belmar has the potential of being a very dangerous area for these things to be operating. Mr. Hutchinson mentioned during the course of the presentation that there may be a suggestion to prohibit them from being operated on sidewalks, which means they're going to be on the street. And there are streets within Belmar, when cars are parked on both sides of the street and traffic is traveling in both directions, there is no room for a scooter or a bicycle. And I will use Alaska Drive as an example, it's the east-west main road that runs through Belmar, where most of the shops are. And if you think of the block where Bar Louie is located, those parking spaces on that block, people have to nose into those parking spaces at an angle, which means when they leave, they have to back out of those spaces onto a narrow street. When you take a look at, consider a short person riding on a scooter and coming around the back of a high SUV, people backing out of those spots are not going to see these people coming, and people who are new to using them aren't going to be familiar, may panic and not stop in time. So I think there is a potential of this being a very dangerous place for them to operate. The other thing I want you to consider too, is I think we'll all agree that Belmar is a very desirable destination in the city of Lakewood. When you're considering your device quantities, keep in mind that because it is such a desirable destination in the city, the potential of having a lot of these things showing up in Belmar on weekends, a large percentage of whatever number you decide on, could be present in Belmar at one time, so please consider that in your quantities deliberations. And the other piece I'll focus on is education. Depending on what age you decide on, is going to be the minimum age for these things, these may be people who do not have a driver's license, or have not had any training on general rules of the road yet. And there are people of driving age who don't have a driver's license anyway. I think the training piece is going to be a very important part of it, and as a suggestion, I'll give you an example that I just recently went through. I had to take a whole lot of online driving courses for the Action Center in order to drive their truck to go around to grocery stores picking up food that's donated. And the way the training was set up is that you had to click, oop, sorry.
Yep, just finish your sentence.
All right. It should include a setup where they have to look at every single slide and every piece of information, click on it, otherwise they're going to breeze through every screen just to get to the last one that says, "I agree to all the above conditions."
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Cody, Mr. Kerr, then it looks like, Mr. Mace. Good evening.
My name's Cody Noblin, I'm with Lime. Sorry, a little loud. I'll be very, very short with my comments as well. So on behalf of Lime, I would like to thank Mayor Paul and all the council members for the opportunity to discuss bringing Lime to Lakewood. We are very excited to provide service to the city of Lakewood. In fact, we've been working closely with the city and other Lakewood stakeholders for more than a year on what a program may look like. Over this time, we've partnered with the city on multiple events that have given residents and visitors alike the opportunity to experience the ease and flexibility that comes with Lime scooters. Most recently, we partnered with the city to offer a number of tours of the art line on Lime scooters. We applaud the city staff for the hard work evident in the presentation to City Council, and I'm very happy to say we generally support the recommendations included in the presentation. However, there is one critical area where we differ, and that is a number of devices allowed to be deployed in the community. We suggest that responsible partners, like Lime, should be allowed to deploy enough devices to meet the demand we see on the ground, based on verifiable data. Specifically, we recommend companies that meet the requirements outlined in the proposal are able to show more than three trips per vehicle per day, be allowed to increase their fleet size. This will encourage good actors to be responsible with their deployments while meeting the demand on the ground and building a strong program for the city. As a global and local leader in dock-free mobility, Lime is very excited to offer a program in Lakewood. Thank you for your time, and know that I'm available for your questions.
Great, thank you. Mr. Kerr? Yeah?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council, thank you for taking up this issue. I'm here mostly, mostly, not completely, but mostly to say what Tom Quinn said, so I'll skip over a lot of the details. I would differ a little bit on the idea of a pilot. One of the things I've seen as a board member of Bicycle Colorado, an organization that's really been on the forefront of looking at, and I like the word, micro-mobility, it's a word I just learned tonight too, but really on the forefront, is that cities like Denver have been out there, have been dealing with this, and I think we've all seen the way that they've dealt with it. We've been able to learn through cities like that. We've also been able to learn through experiences of cities like San Diego, and if you've heard any of the reports out of there, they did not do a thoughtful plan with these micro-mobility devices, and there are a lot of horror stories out of San Diego with that. Other than that, I do want to let you know I feel personally attacked by Mr. Quinn about his comments around spandex. If any of us guys in spandex are doing 35 on garrison, we would be being drafted by some of the professional How many pedestrians are going to be there? How many in, in the traffic, in, in the actual car lanes and all of that? So those are things that, that we all keep in mind. But thank you, Mr. Hutchinson. This is an excellent presentation and I personally would like to see the City Council do something with number eight up there. And also, I'll save you three minutes down the road. I'm probably not going to make it all the way to garbage time, but in that case, I'll agree with everything that Mr. Quinn says at that point. So, thank you.
It looks like he's staying now. Smart man. You've done this before. Mr. Mace, and then Mr. Chase. Anybody else after that? Okay. Okay, will you go ahead and sign up, please? Good evening, Mr. Mace.
Two seconds, man, please. Yes, please. I got it. I got it. Mayor City Council members, I have a couple of major concerns that I'm surprised council did not bring up. One, with this program, with this new bike program you guys are implementing, what gives the public the reassurance that somebody using these bikes isn't coming from a bar or from a club, trashed? What I mean by that is drunk. And what, if somebody wants to use this, these new bikes, but they are impaired, what's the city and what's the company going to do if they do take one of these bikes? But the company finds out and the city finds out they've been drinking or they're again concerned with smoking marijuana while they're doing, while they're on these bikes or scooters? Can somebody please address this issue? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chase?
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I've been in Lakewood a year. This is my first time testifying in front of you. I appreciate the opportunity. Couple of things I want to say real quick. I'm, I'm a regular user of Lime and Ride and in Denver. So I'm a big fan of Lime. I've dropped my other apps and, and so I'm glad he's here. A couple of points I want to make real quick. The helmets, I registered for helmet with a couple of the companies when they first came out in Denver and have yet to receive them. I got notice that, you know, they were only doing 25,000 and, and in more than probably six months of being registered, I still haven't yet to get a free helmet. And then another thing I, I would think, I would hope that you might consider, you know, in Lakewood, we have the ICCS Community Correction Facility. So a lot of people who are coming out of prison and out of jail with, you know, no family and no money or no nothing, you know, maybe a program might be considered to provide them, you know, I mean, because in your first month or so, when, when you're in a halfway house, you might not have resources to get a phone and get access to the, but when you're looking for a job, it would be a heck of a thing to have. That's all I got.
Right, thank you. Here, come on up. Good evening.
And I'm shorter than the average bear. My name's Tina Griffiths, 10035 West Iowa. Insurance perspective, it's what I do for a living. So my first question was, who's going to carry the liability for these bikes? I understand the commercial side of it, where they'd be required to carry some, but as far, sorry.
Hold down. There you go.
I'll hold it down, it's safer. With auto insurance, which everybody's required to carry, I can see where there's some coverages like med pay, if a bike was involved with a motorcycle, or an auto, sorry, that that, that could potentially pay out to help the kid who gets hit. An insured motorist potentially could come into play. But what's, I'm very concerned about what's going to happen, not to the city's liability, but to the individual's liability on this. And what, the property waiver. In Bermuda, they have this, or they at least rent scooters. Awesome. I think that we definitely need to look at what they're doing because they don't require bodily injury for that. But the property waiver, you're responsible if something happens to that bike. What happens to the folks who can't afford that? Does, what, what happens to the program? What happens to the individual? How does that impact, in that case, Lakewood? Where do you guys have to pick up and leave off on that? So those are kind of my questions. Who's going to carry the liability for these individuals, not the company?
Great, thank you. Okay, anybody else? Great. So I'm going to close the, the public feedback portion. We appreciate that. We have our representatives, our two representatives here, I think, you know, any answers that you can help provide the community and certainly council members, your information, if you'd reach out, that'd be great. And do you have a timeframe in mind or?
No.
Okay.
But there's.
The other thing I was just, just thinking is potentially for the, the industry folks who are listening to this and keeping track of maybe some of the things you can help answer, maybe that could be added to the Lakewood Speaks platform, because I know this is on there. And so those, that could just be a resource that those types of questions could be added to for the community that you heard.
If I can go back to the timeframe question for just a minute. There's enough consensus here, in my view, that we should just march, march pretty quickly forward. We do need to draft an ordinance, which won't be quick or simple. We have the normal process to get information out to the public ahead of meetings, those kinds of things. It'll be a first and second reading, 30 days for implementa, or effective date. And we'd, what would be ideal is to get this ready to go and on the street, ready to go by spring, so that we'll have that full spring, summer, fall period to gather good data and good weather. And, and so that, that would be quick. I don't know whether we'll make that or not, but that's certainly in the back of our minds.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Hutchinson. Thank you, your team, for all the good work.
Thank you.
So next up, I have item number five, presentation discussion, waste haulers. And I'd like to invite our sustainability manager, Mr. Wachtel, to the podium. Well, I thought it'd be worth taking a break, but I also, we got a family here with a little one that I'd like to get up here too for a quick comment. Are you guys okay to hang or do you want to take the liberty of just coming up real quick and? Okay, you'll hang. Does council want a break or do you want to go?
Yeah.
Okay. So let's break till 9:30. That's 11 minutes, is that okay?
We'll take a break.
Okay.[1107.12]
I'd like to reconvene the City Lakewood Study Session at 9:32 PM. And before we, we roll into the Waste Hauler Discussion, we do have a young family with a little, little baby that would like to just give a quick public comment. So I'm going to take the chair's discretion and do that. So come on down. You're gonna have to bring your, your little one so people know that I'm not making this up.
Thank you.
Good evening, welcome.
Good evening.
And are you, where, are you on our list?
I'm Sarah Claus with John Claus.
Oh, okay, there we go. Thank you.
Sure. So I'm at 12-700 West 19th Place in Lakewood. And thank you for the chance to address you and to explain why I'm keeping my kid up this late. Because honestly, this is the place where we chose. I've lived in Colorado for almost 18 years and made it a point to choose Lakewood as a place where I could see, having seen the changes over the years, hey, this is a city that I'm excited to call home and where we could raise our kiddo. And everywhere that my husband and I, where we've lived, we've always had municipal trash hauling, Denver included. And, but we welcomed the chance to choose a provider. We chose a green one. We really researched the options. We really felt good with that. Then we ran to issues. Things weren't getting picked up. They were charging incorrectly. Then they got bought out by American Disposal. And then it was a year after that that American Disposal corrected the account and refunded everything. Again, we were back in that boat of like trying to find a great provider. We recently renegotiated our contracts and instead of paying $125 per quarter, we now pay $125 per year. That is how vastly different you can renegotiate your rates. That, we don't have time for that, honestly. We don't have money to go to waste like that. We got together with other people and said, hey, maybe we're part of Sustainable Applewood. Maybe we can get our neighbors to do some bargain and negotiation. And they would not work with us because they say we, we contracted the city. We're not gonna work with a group of neighbors like this. Then meanwhile, it does cut into their profits because this is inefficient business practices. And it's the safety in our neighborhood where we have multiple people who report hopping out of the way of all ages, kids, elders, all sorts of folks walking their dogs because of how quickly these trucks are speeding through, backing up. And you're not their customers. They don't care whether or not you're complaining about their service. And so I just really implore you to please be brave enough to do this, and even in an election year. I think it's terrifying to consider that that could actually dissuade you. And rather than supporting what would be the beneficial for the out, the long-term of Lakewood, that that would actually dissuade your stance for this. And people are being given very little information and wrong information. In my latest ward meeting, people were spreading rumors amongst one, one another. And people are getting scared. If you look on next door, there's a lot of fear out there right now about this without actually having the correct information. So it is a matter of taking this upon yourselves to help correct the information and not be, not stand down to all the bullies out there that are saying, no, this is horrible and we don't believe in the city of Lakewood. If sustainability is a value, it's a value. And let it be a value. I have always been incredibly impressed to see a sustainable sustainability program at so many Lakewood events, doing the dirty work, literally sorting out trash and sorting out recycling. And that says a lot about where we're willing to put our energy as a city. And that impression is what's being given to the greater community. That comes away, though, the second that you don't support this. When we're not looking at what's sustainable for the future of Lakewood, when I have to worry about whether or not the air is clean enough for my kiddo right now, let alone 20, 30 years from now to say, you better not live in Lakewood because we don't support things that make our air good, that make our streets safe. People who entr- entrust, he's pointing to the thing. Am I out?
Both of you signed up, but...
Okay, I'll speak for him. So again, just if it's a value, please let it be a value. The people who entrust the city to switch this up, I find are the people who are relatively new to Lakewood. Everyone's excited about their property values increasing and all these people who are willing to come here and spend a lot of money to do so. And yet, the people who are moving here say, I think City of Lakewood's government can handle this project because I've seen it done before. The people who I'm seeing who are not in support of this are the people who've been burned by the City of Lakewood of the past. And they don't believe in the government. And I would like to say that like, I believe in you guys. And I believe that this is possible to take under your realm. And so I just believe that this, you're capable of keeping our streets safer and keeping Lakewood a lot cleaner and doing, you know, what's consistent with your values all the way through what it's our values. So I appreciate for your, I appreciate your tending to the future of Lakewood. And know that this is an opportunity to renew people's faith in what the government can do to serve everyone. And while there could, instead of supporting the right to competition, instead, you'd be protecting the right of quality services and a healthy Lakewood.
Great. Thank you. Thank you both. Thank you all, all three of you. Okay. All right. Mr. Wachtel, good evening.
Hello, Mayor, City Council. Thank you for this opportunity to talk to you about residential waste hauling in the city. I know this is a complex topic. And I appreciate the chance to have a dialogue with you. We've had, having a great dialogue with the community over the last few months and actually years. And so tonight, as I get started on this, I also want to let you know that Lynn Coppidge, Senior Sustainability Planner from our Sustainability Office is also here and will be available to help answer some of your questions. You saw our very robust report. There was a lot of information in there. I'm sure there'll be a lot of questions. And so the presentation I'm going to give tonight, I'm going to stay fairly high level and try to move through it pretty quickly. And then I'll be happy to answer as many questions as possible. It would be a really long presentation if we walked you through that entire report. So to set the table a little bit, I just want to make sure we're on the same page of what we're talking about. And tonight, this discussion really is around curbside collection of trash for residential properties. And based on some state statutes, what we're talking about is units with buildings or properties that are seven or fewer units. So that's primarily single-family and duplexes and some townhomes, and then an occasional multifamily property that fits that description. And our best estimates in trying to determine how many households that is, like, in Lakewood is around 40,000 households that this would impact, any, any change would impact. So some background information, just to continue to set the stage, we do have some longstanding language in the municipal code governing the fact that we do need to remove waste off of properties, you know, keep our community healthy and safe. So this is paraphrased, but it's Municipal Code, Chapter 8.14, if you want to look at it in detail. And it basically instructs any property where there's trash generated to provide containers. Plastic bags are allowed with a closing mechanism. It does talk about no overflow garbage or excessive volumes and the frequency of removal and some other details of where you're supposed to store it and how long it can be at the curb, and that it needs to be disposed of at a licensed by the state or federal government facility. How much waste are we talking about? A lot. I mean, we produce a lot of waste. 1.9 tons of material per year for an average household in Lakewood. If you multiply that by the 40,000 households we're talking about tonight, you're talking about over a million pounds of trash a year. That's a lot. And it begs the question of what is our responsibility as a community to manage that waste in a responsible manner? It's a topic that we hear a lot about from the community. And during the planning processes for both the comprehensive plan and the sustainability plan that we went through in 2014 and 15, it was a really frequent topic of conversation. And so there are a lot of goals and language in those plans that talk about either, you know, reducing waste or increasing recycling, or about some of the impacts surrounding that that we'll get into a little bit tonight, and impacts on neighborhood. And the most specific, direct language of any of those plans comes in the sustainability plan. We had a working group made up of residents, industry experts, staff, looking at waste issues. And the target that came out of that and that was adopted by the City Council was an effort to achieve a 60% waste diversion rate for our residential waste by 2025. And to make sure we're on the same page, I want to just make sure we are clear on what a diversion rate is. It's a measure of what percentage of the, all the waste that we're creating is diverted or not, does not make it into a landfill. And so you, the most easy, most common and easiest way to imagine that is how much do we get in the recycle bin as opposed to in the trash can? And I think it's important to note that our target is 60%, but that our current waste diversion rate is around 12%. What does our current system look like? It's generally defined as, it falls in the category of what's known as an open subscription system. You're probably all familiar with this. Homeowners or HOAs contract individually with haulers. Those haulers do have a licensing requirement that was put in place a few years ago. It was really intended so we knew who was operating in the city. It is a $50 fee. They do it annually. We ask for some proof of insurance and that their vehicles are licensed. There, as of last year's licensing process, there were 24 companies licensed, eight of which reported to us voluntarily in that license that they offer residential collection. We know some of those numbers may have changed as there's kind of constant fluctuation in the market and companies get bought and sold. That open subscription system, we've done some research to understand exactly what that looks like for Lakewood. Based on truck count study, we know that an average street has four to five providers providing service in Lakewood. That doesn't mean every street has that, but if you look across the city, we know that local streets experience 10 to 12 truck passes in a two-week cycle. Two weeks because oftentimes recycling services every other week. And it's important to note that we did those counts kind of tucked back in neighborhoods where we felt confident that a truck would only be on that road if they were servicing somebody in that nook, in that corner of the neighborhood. So you can imagine that those numbers increase as you work your way out towards collectors and arterials. And we know that there's no consistency in the number, you know, in the day of the week that trash is collected in neighborhoods. So as you can imagine, what started for the sustainability team is looking at the system from the lens of how could we help increase our diversion rate? When you have an open system like this, suddenly when you pull back the cover a little bit, you see that there's a whole bunch of issues and things get complex really quickly. And as you start to talk about what could change and what our concerns are in the community, we hear about cost and neighborhood impacts and environmental impacts. And if the city were to make any rules, what happens to business? And what's the role of government, both from getting involved and filling in the gaps and all types of things? And it gets really complex quickly. So staff over the last couple of years has been doing a lot of research. And we also know that it was, knew that it was very important to try to learn as much from the community as possible. So we really took a very deliberate approach to doing community outreach around this topic with the goal of talking to as many residents as possible and really trying to get out into the community to talk to residents that we don't hear from on a regular basis through our normal channels, through public meetings or through our existing networks. And we really wanted to create a space for some dialogue. So that rather than get kind of the short answer of, do you want to see the city do something, or what's your one issue? We could probe a little bit and talk and have a discussion and learn a little bit more about the trade-offs and the concerns people had and why they had those concerns. We also wanted to make sure to get as much data as possible. I think that's evident if you look at our report. Explore a really wide range of solutions. We looked everywhere we could think of around the country, around the state, to see how other cities were handling this, to learn from other communities. And then when we saw interesting ideas or complex topics, we did additional research to get a little deeper. I just want to highlight the most recent outreach effort, which was the 2018 Lakewood Roundtable. This was funded by a grant from the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment. So that was great. And we leveraged that funding to get out in the community and do just what I was just speaking about. We went in-person to events all summer long, concerts, softball games, T-ball games, farmers markets, you name it, to set up a booth and create a space where we could really have one-on-one conversations and take notes while we talk to people and, and get a lot of feedback. The next best thing to, speaking with residents face-to-face was to leverage the new Lakewood Together platform where the community could provide a lot of comment. We could share a lot of information. There could be discourse online for those that, you know, weren't at those events. And so we had a robust presence on, on that site with a lot of different opportunities for residents to engage. Kind of trickling down here on, you know, the next best way to try to reach people, we used that funding to set up some mobile kiosks that we were able to move around the community. And the idea there was just some really basic, simple questions with the goal of getting folks to that website where they could engage deeper. And we kept going. We did pre-stamped postcards. They were the same idea. Just give us some quick feedback, but hopefully this kind of helped people get engaged and get to the website. We were on their doorstep in newspapers and publications. We had a heavy social media presence. We made ourselves available for neighborhood meetings. And we kept people up to date through email newsletters. And all of that, I think, helped us reach a lot of people. It's never enough. There's always folks that aren't gonna have, had an opportunity to engage, but we tried our best here. And in the end, we had almost 1,800 visitors to that website. And I'm, think it's really telling that almost 800 of them, we could see visited multiple pages. So that, I think, is a good indicator that they were looking at the information. We documented 268 detailed conversation at those events over the summer, had 149 kiosk interactions. And you can see the rest of the data up there. And we summarized it in your report. When we collect all of that feedback, all the research, we did a statistically significant community survey in 2016, using the same firm that the city uses for its citizen survey, which is also statistically significant. When we take all those reports and interviews with other cities and we start to compile it all together, we can really group the issues and concerns into five broad categories. Those are concerns around, that affects people in their households, impacts to neighborhoods and nuisance in neighborhoods, concerns and issues around the actual industry and the business side of, of collecting trash in Lakewood, the environmental impacts where we started this, and then the role of government and impacts to our operations of the existing system. And, you know, each of those then has subtopics. And in the plan, it gets, so it starts to get complicated, and you don't want me to walk you through each of these. We'll be here all night. But in the, in the report that we provided you, we go into each of those subtopics and we provide you with existing conditions as best we could determine those. We summarize the community feedback from the various outreach mechanisms and efforts. And then we provide you with staff notes and the additional research that we conducted to try to round out the information around each of those topics. What I would like to do is just highlight a couple of those that I think are particularly important and kind of tend to float to the surface as we have conversations with the community. And so I'm gonna start by skipping down to cost of service. The first couple, gaps in service and customer service are really about the level of service folks receive. Cost of service, we just heard from one public comment, is an issue. It's very important to most residents, not a big surprise, but in the survey, you'll see that's one of the number one things, is the number one consideration for... that's one of the number one things is the number one consideration for most residents when they're looking to pick a hauler. But we also heard a lot about the inconsistency of pricing and what people pay. And oftentimes with for the same company and the same service, people are paying vastly different prices for their trash collection services. We heard a lot of comments that the costs people pay don't reflect volumes, that there's a lack of fairness, that one person provides, you know, creates very little trash and their neighbor creates a whole bunch of trash and they're paying the same or sometimes more. We learned pretty consistently that recycling is an add-on service, so you're paying extra if you want to recycle. And so that's can be a significant barrier to participation. And when you step back from that system and put those together, you see the way that our open system works right now, if we're just looking through the lens of the waste diversion target that where we started, we have a system that disincentivizes the waste diversion, right? The easiest thing and the least expensive option is just to throw everything in the trash. And we're if we want to hit these community goals and want to be responsible with how we're disposing of that waste, we're asking people to pay extra or take extra time to pay for that recycling or to learn how to compost that waste. Also related to cost, we learned a lot about how the market actually works for waste hauling and learned that windshield time is the biggest factor that impacts pricing for customers. By windshield time, we're talking about the amount of time it takes for the company to get that vehicle to your curb and service you as a company. And because it costs a lot of money to operate these vehicles and to pay the labor, if it costs that company $20 to get to your neighborhood and they only have a couple of customers, that cost is going to get distributed amongst those customers. If they have 50 customers in that neighborhood, obviously the price comes down. And we can see that through some studies that organized systems where a single hauler has some geography reserved for themselves, you see prices reduced somewhere between 12 and 35% because of that efficiency gain. And it's also important to note that if you want to look at that disincentive that's in place and the fairness factor with collection, that systems that have that use volume-based pricing, meaning customers can subscribe to a different size can for service and then also include recycling, turn that over and make it so that there's an incentive to put more in the recycle bin so you can pay less for your trash. We can talk more about that later. But just to move forward with the efficiency piece of the puzzle here for cost, we can see this at play right here in Lakewood. When we look at the average cost of service for the community as a whole and compare that to the cost, average cost of service for those residents that live in homeowners' associations who get to negotiate for a single hauler for their geography. And what we see is the average cost per month for a household in Lakewood is between $20 and $25 for trash and recycling. And for an HOA, it's between $8 and $12 per household for the same service. So if you're not in an HOA in Lakewood, you're typically, and we take the middle point on those numbers, you're paying around $150 more per year for your trash service than someone in an HOA. And that could be considered an equity issue for our community. And I think it's important to note that nationally, we don't have local data, but households that live in home in in communities that are homeowners' associations, report about $20,000 higher household income per year than those that are not. So that's just an example of that efficiency benefit within the city of Lakewood. And we can look around nearby communities and see the same thing at play. So here's some example communities. They often have volume-based pricing, so we looked at the middle size, which is 64-gallon, which is about 66, I think, percent or 64% of Lakewood residents report, either being 64 gallons or smaller with their trash. You can see Lakewood's is that $20 to $25 a month. And if we look at these communities, these are not municipally-run communities, so these are communities that were in the same boat as us and now have contracted with a hauler for either districts or for the city as a whole. And you see those prices come down, really reflecting that efficiency gain. Moving on, I just want to make sure to emphasize customer choice. This is where things get sticky for for the decision-making here. And what makes one of the reasons this is really difficult for the community to wrestle with on this topic is that we know residents really like having the option to choose their hauler. There's no way around it. People report that in really high numbers. And I think this really was interesting because those conversations I talked about, those face-to-face, really unveiled how conflicted a lot of residents are. We had so many conversations where residents started by saying, I really like the option to choose. And then when we started talking about the other impacts, they kind of said, well, I'd love to address that too. And so, you know, it's a it's a tricky situation. So and we included some examples of those. Moving over to neighborhood impacts, all those truck traffic, you're aware of some of the impacts there. Just want to highlight aesthetics because that's an issue we hear over and over again. And I know it's an issue that this council's addressed in other ways. And, you know, there's no while the municipal code does say you need lids and there shouldn't be overflow or excessive volumes, because there's not a lot of consistency in the type of containers provided, you know, and people are providing their own or some companies provide those, we see a huge range of what's on the curb. And this is six of 30 pictures that we took just one day, November 14th, driving around a small portion of Lakewood. I don't think there was any big event, you know, leading up to November 14th. It's before Thanksgiving. And of course, there's plenty of parts of Lakewood and households that just put out one bin, but it was just interesting to see the variety that's out there. And we hear a lot of complaints about the aesthetics and the amount of volumes of trash on the curb different days of the week. Of course, we started with the diversion rate discussion. Moving on to the environmental impacts, just want to highlight this really quick because 91% of residents report wanting to minimize waste sent to landfills. And yet we're at 12%. So that should tell us that something's not working in our system. There's a gap between what people say are their values and our behaviors. And our adopted target is 60%. And it's important to note that 53% of household waste is recyclable and 35% is compostable. So we can get there and but our current system's just not doing it. Here's the gap between where we are year to year as we measure this in our 2025 target. We were able to do some research and look at programs other cities have put in place and see what they do, how they move the needle for diversion. And you can see we have drop-off recycling. We have been doing a lot of education and that's reflective pretty much on where we are in our diversion rate. We do have curbside recycling offered sometimes, so we're kind of on the very bottom end of that, maybe even a little bit lower because it's not an official program. Quick note on greenhouse gas emissions, we do have also targets for greenhouse gas emission reduction. And when we set that target, it wasn't pulled out of thin air. That 20% reduction assessed all of the strategies in our sustainability plan to understand if we implemented those, how much we might be able to reduce our emissions. And we can accomplish around 10% of the emissions reductions we need to hit our target by addressing this particular issue. So it is a significant opportunity to move us towards our adopted targets. Obviously, I'm going to move on from these concerns, but I just do want to note that how, you know, there are issues here around, you know, what policies might do to businesses, if we affect jobs, administrative role for the city. If we put policies in place, I just want to emphasize that, you know, it is important to understand what administrative costs would look like if we end up taking a role in contracting or overseeing any part of the waste system. But there's also costs currently for the city filling in gaps. We spent $300,000 in 2017 putting on special cleanup events for large items and for other special cleanups from a variety of different sources. And that doesn't include the staff time coming out of public works and other departments picking up, you know, items just left in various places in the city. And of course, there's also infrastructure impacts. So maybe turning this the other to the other side of the coin, we hear all these concerns and issues. So let's look at it from, well, what would a great system look like? And what we've heard from the community, if we ask it in this way and we put all this data together is, wouldn't it be great if we could have a system here that was neighborhood-friendly, that cost people a little less money, preserved market competition, protected our environment the best we can, given that we still are producing waste, was fair for people and fair for the companies offering service and that had accountability for customer service and for, you know, the for the any administration going on? Wouldn't that be great if we could do that? And so the question then becomes, if that's what we want to get as a city, how do we go about doing that? And in the report, we outline a lot of different ways to get there. And it's important to think about two categories. System requirements, those are the rules you can put in place, and then how you actually implement those rules. And those are two separate things that you need to consider as you take on this this topic. So those system requirements are really rules. And we provided a really long list and broke them down on some pros and cons and what they may or may not accomplish in your report. For example, it really depends on what we're trying to solve for. If we are really worried about the aesthetics and overflow trash, you know, maybe a requirement that we standardize carts is a is a good thing to explore. If we're trying to close the gap in service, maybe it's about having haulers offer large item pickup on a regular basis or a couple of times a year. It could be to say, everybody, if you're offering trash service, you need to also provide recycling, not as a separate cost, but just embedded. Maybe it's about volume-based pricing. But more importantly, probably in terms of the outcomes, is how the city would actually implement those types of rules. And I just want to go back to what I mentioned before because it's really important. And that is, systems that increase efficiency for haulers can reduce the cost of providing service because they, you know, make it less expensive to get to your home. And by creating that efficiency that can help the hauler reduce costs, we can fill that gap or maybe not fill it all the way up. So we still save folks money with additional services. On the flip side, if we just start mandating rules on haulers, but we don't help them gain efficiency, there's a really high likelihood that will increase costs for our customers. So I just think it's important to keep that that dynamic in mind. So the pathways that we looked into and that are commonly used, I'll run through them real quick. One is enhanced licensing. This is the idea that basically we would maintain our current open system, but we would add requirements through our license annual licensing process so that we could say, anyone who hauls here needs to meet these rules, whatever those may look like. It's a simple method and easy way to implement new policies, and it maintains the open market and choice for residents in Lakewood. However, doesn't do a very good job addressing most of those nuisance issues in the neighborhood. Of course, we could put some rules to address some of them like standardized carts, but it's not going to reduce necessarily the volume of vehicles moving around our neighborhoods. And because if we're not providing that increased efficiency, we're probably resulting in increased rates for residents. A creative potential solution to look at would be a preferred hauler system. The idea here is that the city contracts with one or more haulers to be the preferred hauler for Lakewood and residents opt in. We don't really know if this will work. There's one example, I think we'll hear from a neighborhood where I apparently it seems like it is reducing rates. We've heard from other communities that they talked to some of their haulers when they were in a similar situation and there just wasn't a sense that it was going to work. But we could certainly look into it. And the idea here is it would protect choice, but it might be a carrot to try to get one hauler or multiple haulers a little bit more market share and increase efficiency. And therefore, we could start to get some of those benefits and add add some of those rules without making cross costs go up too much. It would likely have an increased administrative role since right now we have very minimal administrative role. The next pathway is a contracted system. This is if the city would choose to contract with one or multiple haulers, can be designed a lot of different ways through a competitive bidding process. And those rules that we decide are the most important to put in place would be put into that RFP, into that bid, so we could accomplish that. And so the benefit there is this is a way to increase that efficiency and therefore increase the available services for residents. It would likely result in cost savings for most households and can address most of those nuisance and environmental issues. Of course, it would also result in an increased administrative role for the city and has the unfortunate impact of limiting or removing customer choice, depending on how it's designed. There's a fourth pathway, which is municipalization. And frankly, we didn't spend much time as staff looking into this. It would cost significant amount of money and resources. I mean, imagine the city trying to, you know, fill all the needs in terms of buying trucks and the labor and the risk management and administration. So we really left this one alone. We don't think it's necessary to achieve our goals or address the issues. We throw all this in the table. And just as a caveat, this is staff providing a kind of A through F grade, so it's not perfectly scientific. We did our best to take, you know, all of the things that we had researched and heard and then looked at each of those pathways and measured them against that vision for an improved system. And it's interesting to see that there is no perfect solution, right? There's trade-offs no matter which way we go, which makes this really difficult, but the some version of a contracted system provides the greatest opportunity for us to to address and achieve the most amount of benefit in the system. So in summary, staff's assessment came back indicating that a carefully-designed, contracted waste collection system supporting multiple haulers can really help us realize the benefits of organized collection and free market competition because it's a it would be a bidding process and provide the best opportunity to achieve the most of those goals and address most of those impacts. We'd like counsel to for your consideration to have us move forward and design a couple different scenarios of what that could look like. We could go out and get some bids and some pricing and really see what kind of services we really could get and what those outcomes might look like. And then, of course, to have us continue deliberate and meaningful community engagement, both with residents and with the haulers. And just before I go to questions, I just want to paint a picture of based on, and we included this in your packet and your in your report, of the kind of things other communities have been able to achieve going down this route. If we can create some districts and have that competitive bid, puts we can get some volume-based pricing in place to level the fairness and create the incentive to increase diversion rates. We can add in requirements for the haulers to provide large item and special collections throughout the year at people's curbside so they're not having to load a truck and take it to a special facility or wait for a special collection event. We can find opportunities like a lot of communities have for an opt-in curbside compost collection, which is becoming increasingly popular. We could standardize carts and size options. We could set collection schedules and even routes. And we could add really great customer service opportunities, including things like door-to-curb service for identified populations and stuff like that. So just to paint a picture, can the question is, can we get all this, save folks money and have a great system in Lakewood? And so we'd like to to go continue to explore and see if this is feasible. So with that, I'll take a seat and we'll be happy to field questions and hear comment from the public. Thank you for your time.
We're going to we're going to go to the public first so that we're able to maybe address some of those questions in your presentation. Before I do that, and I think it's important to note, the next step, if counsel gives some direction, is still more public outreach and gathering more information based upon what that what that direction would be. Is that is that accurate? So it wouldn't be where this would just go next to an ordinance and there would be adoption, there'd be further community conversations and discussion.
That's correct. There's a lot to figure out still. Thank you.
Okay. All right, folks. So it's 10:00 PM and we have about 20 people that have wished to speak and we all get three minutes. What I would ask is that this isn't I'm for or against, this is what are you thinking as in what questions would we ask or things along those lines? I'd ask that if somebody says something that you're going to say, please don't repeat. We want to be respectful of your time and also staff time as well as the council's time tonight and really be able to get through this here in a meaningful manner. So I ask for your partnership in that and then counsel when we get into the discussion as well, you know, a couple of questions to start and see where we get and we'll go from there. So first up, I have Jason Price. And then next I have Bill Schorer, Tom Quinn, Rick Ash and Sandy Weathers.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel, I'm Jason Price. I live at 1861 South Youngfield Court on Green Mountain. This is the first time I've addressed the council. I won't belabor the point of how annoying the big trucks are. I live in Cul-de-sac where we have seven houses. We have three garbage trucks, three garbage companies that service the seven houses, making four and a half truck trips per week. That includes recycling on a two-week basis. They come Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. I find the number of trucks to be excessive and I'd like to find a way to reduce that number. I appreciate Lakewood's proposal to establish a municipal trash pickup. Okay, most people would agree that if we can reduce the number of trips by these huge, unsightly, heavy, smelly, polluting, potentially dangerous trucks, that our community is a better place. That's practically a no-brainer. The betterment is achieved through less wear and tear on the roads, less diesel particulate matter in the local matter in the local air, less noise pollution, less risk of hitting a kid on a bicycle, less opportunity to ding a parked car, et cetera. In an ideal world, there would be zero garbage trucks on the road, and we would make little to no non-compostable, non-recyclable garbage. I want to make two important points here. Let's consider for a minute the extent to which trash and trash collection is a personal issue versus a municipal issue. Trash accumulation is a personal issue from the instant you generate the trash in your home until the moment you place it at the curb. Once your hand lets go, it becomes a municipal issue, because your trash bag or trash can is now on full display to everyone in the neighborhood. Placed conspicuously on the public sidewalk or street, thereby interfering with pedestrian or automobile flow, it is both an aesthetic and a right-of-way issue. On windy days, some of your trash or recyclables may blow onto your neighbor's property, and therefore is also a littering issue. When the truck arrives, your trash gets commingled with the trash of everyone else's on the truck's route, making trash a fungible communal commodity. Compacted trash goes to a municipal landfill where it is managed in perpetuity by federal, state, and local governments. Purely from a time perspective, a private person generates and possesses trash for about a week, and then, using our current method, a private company transports and then buries the trash over the course of one or two days. But eventually, the municipality is left holding the bag, literally the trash bag. Assuming a 50,000-year lifespan of accumulated compressed and buried trash in an average landfill, that is about 18.2 million days of care and maintenance, of which the individual responsible for the trash is responsible for seven days, the company who transports and bulldozes the trash for one or two.
Time's up, sir.
Okay. Then I will summarize. The second point that I would like for you to explore...
I'm sorry. We got 20 people that have signed up.
Sure. Okay. Hoover, Alabama...
You'd like to send that information to us? That'd be great.
Okay. Would you just look up Hoover, Alabama, their waste disposal system? It is very successful.
Thank you for coming out tonight. Appreciate it. And if you'd send that to council, that'd be great. I don't have a gavel. Then next up, we have Mr. Quinn, Mr. Ash, and Ms. Weathers. Did she leave? Okay. Mr. Chase, Mr. Huff, Ms. Miller, Mr. Volski.
This is speed mine up.
Okay, great. Thank you.
No, I know. There's a lot of people here. I'll get right to the point, and...
Grab the mic, too, so they can hear you.
Yes.
Great.
My name is Bill Schorer, S-C-H-R-O-E-R. I reside at 2307 South Gray Drive. And, you know, bear with me, I wanted to have the written statement, so I don't have to go through all of it, but you'll have that in staff. I'm an economist. I've worked in this area for about 40 years, and I just want to compliment the city for supporting sustainability through your division. You're a progressive city. It's smart, good government. I support the staff's recommendation to pursue a contracted waste collection system to select a single waste service provider per residential district. Then I have five points real quick. I don't think you should limit that, though, to, you shouldn't limit that. If one big company is, has better economics, go with all that. Don't play equity, you know, so, well, we need to catch, you know, this smaller person. Get the best provider. If that's one big one, great. Make sure you have as much service uniformity between all the districts. Then the big one, it's that third point. I'll just get right to the point. I fully support the universal recycling, but the recycling market has problems. You've got to stay on top of that. Contamination is rampant. You have poor market conditions. We've got to all band together to make sure we have clean recyclables, we stay on the waste haulers, so that we get reports from them for what's actually recycled, or else we're just being duped. There's a lot of markets that work well, aluminum, steel, but you get into these plastics and paper, you know, we think we're recycling and they're dumping them. So for us to meet that 60% goal, we've all got to band together and make sure that works, and not just assume it's going to work. People think, I've run these big recycling programs for large offices. You put out a, you know, recycling thing with the little arrows, oh, it'll be fine. No. Recycling's a pain in the neck. Half the people, you know, if you have a good program, it can work. Anyway, enough of that. I think that it's good to have the composting element for a fee. That provides enormous potential for the community. And then one last thing, we can all learn more. One thing I want to just leave you with, what about the first recycling heroes? You know, my mom's 86. Those people recycled before it became green. I think in this year's celebration, we should reach out in the community, have those people record their stories, and honor them at cider days, and they can tell us how they can food and collected stuff. Those are the people that really pioneered this, and that would help us get the word out to recycle effectively. Anyway, a few other points, but there's not enough time. Thanks for this opportunity. I look forward to working with these guys. They did a very good report. I mean, you, it's a good place to start. And the last thing is, I come from the city of Sheridan. If they can do it, a great city like Lakewood can, I paid $86 a year, free recycling, and they had two pickup days. I saved $400 on getting rid of four TVs. Thanks for the time.
Thank you. Mr. Quinn, no spandex. Mr. Ash, then Mr. Chase.
Thank you, Mayor Pollan, City Council. I'll be brief on this point as well. And I'm flipping my hat, so it's Tom Quinn versus Executive Director for the ACBID. But so, first point is with regard to this report and the process that staff has gone through on this. Our approach to this issue needs to be evidence-based. It needs to be based upon what is the most efficient and effective way to move forward in addressing the issues that have been outlined by staff. So increasing our diversion rate, providing more, or reducing impacts on neighborhoods, those kinds of things. They've done a very thorough job of outlining that in the staff report. I think their recommendation is actually the one that is going to be the most efficient. Again, at this point, there's still details to be worked out, but moving this forward at this point is the right, the right direction, and so I support doing that. Secondly, regarding the process, I understand that this goes back a long ways. I have here a report from the ACIC dating to 2008 recommending the expansion of curbside recycling in Lakewood as the most effective way to increase our diversion rate. From 2008, we go on through the whole process of creating the sustainability plan that went from 2013 to 2015 and beyond, and now we have an additional three years of work by staff to get us to this point. This is the way, this is the way to move forward. We can't just continue to study indefinitely. We move forward to the next part of the public process, working together with the community. Thank you very much. I hope you'll move this forward this evening, and we'll continue the discussion.
Right. Thank you.
Good evening.
Did that in a minute and a half. Mr. Ash, can you beat that?
Yep. I'll do the best I can.
Yep.
Briefly, so please excuse my lack of eye contact. I've been attended many meetings around the city where this subject has been discussed. The issues were the same, so let's look at each of them. Safety. First, let me say that nothing is more important than the safety of our citizens. I've heard that trash trucks drive too fast back in and out of streets and display other bad driving habits. These are absolutely things that need to be addressed and rectified. I've heard as recently as this past Saturday at the Ward 1 meeting that residents have spoken to the police and nothing has changed. These are traffic enforcement issues and are not reason enough for the city to mandate the use of specific trash haulers. If complaints have not been responded to by our police department, we need to reach out to Chief McCaskey for solutions in order to satisfy citizens concerned. Next, trash rates. I myself have had six trash haulers since I bought my house in 1995. One retired, one sold out, and the rest were changed by me because of poor service or attempted rate hikes. In each case, I called my provider and negotiated lower rates or changed to another provider. It is not the city's job to negotiate rates for people who are not willing to do it for themselves. Again, not reason enough for the city to take away my right to choose. Quality of service and services, same solution applies to rates. Take control of the situation yourself and get satisfaction, or get another provider. Do you really think that its service is going to improve if you take away the competition? It's not the city's job. Sustainability. It seems that sustainability is going to be the buzzword for 2019. You should all know that I support sustainability. I've stood here before you in these chambers and spoken in favor of it. I also sort my recyclables and take them to the Quail Street facility once a month. I absolutely agree that there are too many trash trucks rolling down our streets each week. This could be dealt with by the consolidation of routes and services, which should be mandated through the licensing process with each trash hauler. As for wear and tear on our streets, at any given time, there are furniture delivery, tree trimming, power company, satellite TV, cable, phone company, FedEx, UPS, and others traveling on our streets. You're not going to notice very much difference by eliminating a few trash trucks. For the city to use the cloak of sustainability in order to take away a citizen's right to choose, it is at least, at the least questionable and at the most wildly hypocritical when one considers the city has done and continues to do little to achieve the sustainability goals it set for itself just a few years ago. Finally, the Big Brother issue. The city should no more be getting involved in my choice of trash hauler than deciding whether I should shop at King Supers or Safeway or use Verizon or AT&amp;T. I spent the entire day in a room with you all at your planning session a little more than a week ago, and you have far more pressing issues to deal with this year. It's bad enough that my constitutional right to vote on the Strategic Growth Initiative has been denied by the endless stalling tactics of special interest groups and due to an ordinance that needs to be repealed ASAP. I am disappointed that you would even consider denying my right to choose.
Thank you. And so I would encourage, again, this isn't general public comment, this is comment related to this issue, and I'd appreciate if we can just keep on track, so everybody has the opportunity. Mr. Chase, Mr. Huff, Ms. Miller, Mr. Volski, I think, left, and then Mr. DePaul, I think? Good evening.
Hi. Again, I'm Randy Chase. I live in Ward 3, so it's nice to meet you, gentlemen. What I'm concerned about is recycling, at least in the area I live. It's service, the homeowners association takes care of it, and they provide a bin, but they didn't provide a recycling bin, and they just swapped out to these new, easy-to-handle things, and nobody has recycling bins. You know, some people sort it, but it's not very well taken care of, and I hope that that's something that you will encourage in the regulations that recycling be, be important.
Great. Thank you. Two minutes and 30 seconds. Mr. Huff, still here? Ms. Miller? Karen Miller? Mr. Volski? Rick? 10100 East, I couldn't really pronounce the last script. Marie, you're still here? Come on down. Good evening. Then up after that, I have Ken May, Quentin Harton, I think Quentin's gone, Patrick Lightkey, and Heather. Good evening. Welcome.
Want to thank you all for taking up this issue and staff for doing just such a fantastic job. This is a really good research study now, and we can see the dynamics with this market by looking at how the industry has changed and how other cities have changed. We can now get much more affordable service, much higher service, and much lower impact by making the changes that staff has recommended. I don't want to go back over what they have already told you. It's just so clear in terms of a win-win-win economically, environmentally, and all. Instead, I'm going to speak as a 22-year successful business owner in Colorado and the direct impact on me and my family, because I think our particular situation is duplicated with many households around Lakewood. So I live on, you heard from one gentleman who lives on a cul-de-sac, and he said there's like, you know, seven trips, and, but I live on a street that's otherwise a quiet street, which is a street that you use to get to many of those other very short streets. It also happens to have a few block straight section, and since there are so many different haulers, there's like eight haulers, you know, they step on it going down that street because they have to get, you know, past a block or two of houses. And many of us in our neighborhood have swamp coolers. I have my business, we have, I have the windows open while I'm doing calls. Every time one of those trucks come by, it takes a couple minutes out of the call, where that, that obliterates the sound. You can't talk, you have to wait till they go by, when they hit the brakes, when they process the garbage in it. This is so different from any sort of other delivery truck. It's a totally different situation. It's so, so noisy. In addition to the pollution, in addition to the street damage, we can have tons of competition, but while the city is using its power to negotiate and get the best rates for us, so we use the market. And I don't consider it a benefit if I have to switch my trash hauler six times and do tons of research and try to negotiate with them. So I'm relying on you, and I think, you know, we can have good service at good prices like all these other communities surrounding us, and much better conditions for families, neighborhoods, and businesses. Thanks.
Thanks. Ken? Mr. May, good evening.
I have some slides.
Sure. Go ahead and put them right here. She'll put it up on the overhead if you'd like.
How do I work this thing?
Did they have that? Or did I accept?
Could you send your presentation?
Oh, sir, are you with Applewood? Are you with Applewood?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, so you, yeah, you requested the presentation? All right. Thank you.
Yeah, well, thank you. The spacebar. Okay. Three minutes, seven slides, so I'll be as quick as I can.
So you had pre-arranged for extra time? Is that accurate?
No, I haven't, because the gentleman with the baby is part of our group, so we'll, if I could have an extra minute or so, because you just came out with a report, of which I read the whole 121 pages, that I might be able to comment on. Anyway, this is, they did a really great job of high-level stuff. I'm a part of the Lakewood Sustainable Neighborhood Group, so I'm standing up here and making a pain in the neck to some of you guys, because you've got all this great stuff going on. But it's been a really great, great program, and all the surveys that everyone's done has shown that the proliferation of garbage trucks is a big deal. So it didn't seem like the city was ever, ever going to do anything, so I kind of volunteered to investigate this in a very microscopic part of Lakewood, in a very small part of Applewood, where I've lived for the last 40 years. So, so what I decided to do was just pick a very, very small area, because what we were interested in doing was trying to reduce the number of trucks on the residences. I weren't really interested in doing much else. It's not a huge cost issue, but we really wanted to, it's a sustainability program. Whoops, I didn't hit the one on. So, okay. So we wanted to know how many garbage companies were coming through our streets, and our hope was that we could aggregate and figure it all out, talk to the garbage companies, aggregate their numbers, and then give us a better rate, and we'd have a few of them, and everything would be just great. Well, that was a pretty naive, naive type of thought. We've absolutely got no leverage with these companies whatsoever. And in fact, the city, on page 13 of their presentation, of their report, showed that of all the garbage companies, 20, I believe, or eight, they only got a response from one. They're not interested in talking to us, and they're not even interested in talking to you guys. So... So I don't know, we didn't have any choice. And further investigation shows that the lack, what the lack of transparency can do to a market like this. So, I mean, it didn't make any sense to us that all these people are coming through, I guess I've got to go. Okay. Within our, my little enclave where I live, there's 44 houses, four, and this is facts, I mean, I've got all the backup documentation, copies of bills, this is micro stuff that affects us in this little area, and I think it applies to everybody in the neighborhood. We have four companies servicing the 44 households. There's one company does 19, another one 14, another one eight, another one three. We have collections on Tuesday, two on Thursday, one on Friday. They come early in the morning, so people put their trash out the night before, so five days a week, we have trucks, garbage containers on the street. So every two weeks, we have 12 trucks servicing 44 customers. The average truck, and this is in page 26 of the report, gets 2.53 miles per gallon.
You want, you want to just run through the slides because your time's up?
Oh dear. Okay, sorry.
And I'm giving you leeway because there was a request for 10 minutes for the.
I requested that, but as I said, anyway. This is the cost. The costs range from $16 to $49 and $49.45 in the same neighborhood, same company. So we had some pretty angry people when they found out that that was the case. You talk to the trash haulers, they don't give you any explanation. They're ripping us off because they can, because they don't give you any information. Competition only works when you have perfect. Next one.
Any more facts you want to share real quick?
Yep. This is one, the city stole the, picked the, they didn't look at the preferred provider. Highlands Ranch, all those rocket scientists down there have come up with a really good system. I'm not necessarily advocating this, but we, there's no way we can get the price that these guys are getting, talking to, unless the city does it. For $14.15, they get unlimited trash, you can choose any company you want, recycle is free. Okay, so recommendations, please do something. You've been talking about this since the 90s, three years' worth of study. I figure that we're, the numbers in the staff report, 40,000 households, they're paying ex, extra per year. I figure that this, we're paying an extra $6.6 million a year, keeping the trash companies because they can rip us off. You've been talking about this for 30 years, please don't talk about it too much longer because it's costing real money. 30 years at $6 million, that's $200 million, that's a lot of money. Let's do something, please.
All right, thank you. Please make sure you send that to council, yeah. All right.
The clock should build a.
Jonathan, you have a copy?
I have a copy.
All right, thank you.
And you did a great job.
Mr. Hartman, I think he left. Mr. Littke, Patrick? And then Heather Rivanna, Teresa Aguilar, 2419 Ward Drive, I can't read the writing. Okay. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening. Patrick Littke, I'm not actually a Lakewood resident, so if I'm not allowed to speak, just say so. I just put my name on here on the list. I didn't know it was, that was an invitation or asking to speak, but if I'm okay to speak, then I will, and it's short.
Okay, go for it.
All right. I believe Denver's property taxes are considerably lower than Lakewood, and yet that includes trash pickup. So hopefully someone looked at Denver to see what they're doing and how they can afford it and how they have it set up. I do like the idea of choice, however, I think that's really tough to do in a situation like this, but perhaps maybe there's enough incentive or low enough that if Lakewood provides or has one trash hauler, if you want to go with that one, then you can use that one, or you can go with your own choice, but hopefully enough people agree, yes, I like what Lakewood is offering, I'm going to go with that one because it's cheaper rather than the one that I would like to have for myself. And then remember, friend in Boulder, that pays for the trash bags, they're very expensive trash bags. You can fill up as many as you want, you've already paid for the service because you bought the trash bag that the city or whatever company is picking up. And, yep, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're coming from Golden. Heather, Ingle Street?
No, I haven't.
Okay, thank you. Teresa Aguilar?
She's gone.
She's gone.
I support change.
Support change, okay. 2419 Ward Drive, forgive me.
It's Rebecca.
Rebecca. Hobson?
Labson.
Labson, welcome. Good evening.
The only one that's in the phone book.
That's great.
Well, it means you wouldn't recognize it. Unlike some others, I've been a resident for 35 years. When we first moved here, I thought it was quaint that I had to organize my own trash service, which was easy. I just took over the trash delivery for the home that I bought, and that was Evergreen disposal, and they gave us fabulous service, and I loved their parade routines and all of that for 20 years. Then they sold to Waste Management, and because I have worked for 25 years in the environmental consulting industry, I wasn't content to stay with Waste Management. And I've had such a struggle since trying to implement that choice. In 1994, the city of Lakewood was set to impose an environmental tax due to the superfund issues at Lowry. I wrote my first letter in 1994 that this is an issue the city needs to consider and to solve. And this has all come to a head in the last six months as a result of some of these reports. I now have the privilege of paying, knowing that I pay twice the average. I'm not unhappy with the service, but I am unhappy with having trucks on the street every day. I'm unhappy with having trash on the street every day, and I have concerns about infrastructure. We're already paying to have the sewer systems repaired, and if I were to talk about choice, I would point out that it takes transparency and information, and that's what we don't have. At a minimum, the city needs to require that transparency. You go on the websites for each of these haulers, nobody will give you a price. Pro disposal took four weeks to negotiate my price the last time, and now I find out that I'm paying twice of what everybody else is. It's not because I haven't made the calls, it's not because I haven't asked for the senior discount, it's because they have all these factors they have to work in, including how many people are delivering. So I'm here to support the sustainability goals as well as the health, safety, and the appearance of our neighborhoods, and I was very impressed with the report. I would suggest, I would like the preferred option that we can opt into or out of. But my final point is, I do not have my choice, because my choice is for a sustainable option.
Great.
And that's not there now.
Thank you, thank you. Nate? There you are, Nate. And then I have the Tornados and Shakti, so if you wish to speak and you didn't sign up, please come down and see Michelle, okay? Good evening.
My name's Nate Whitman. Thank you. We're here tonight because this is hard, and to stay home would have been easy. JFK, on the way to the moon, he said, "We do these things not because they're easy, but because they're hard, because that goal will serve to organize and measure the best of our energies and skills, because that challenge is the one that we're willing to accept and we're unwilling to postpone." Okay? That, and this choice thing keeps coming up. We all have a choice, right? Some of us don't want this choice. A lot of us, I think, want this choice. There's choices on both sides of this discussion, and for us not to pursue this just because some people are losing a choice, you know, it doesn't make sense. I have to stop at a stoplight, all right? I don't, I lost my choice. Someone put a stoplight. Stop signs, same thing. Speed limits, same thing. Communities, governments set up these standards because it's helping the better good of the community. And garbage on our streets every day, right? Worst-case scenario, in Lakewood right now, you live on a cul-de-sac and you happen to have all eight companies pick up trash? On a trash day, you have 16 trucks on your street to the end and back. On a recycle day, you have 32 trucks. 32 trucks if they're all full. It's 1.8 million pounds, okay? Going down our streets once a week, right? It's just crazy. Fort Collins, when they started looking at this, they were thinking it was going to cost them in road repairs $175,000 a year, right? Annually, by not addressing this issue. And so, yes, choice is important, but it is costing us all a fortune in every which way, and that's the majority of what I have to say, so, thank you.
Great, thank you. Dave, Francesca? Okay. Dave, looks like you're speaking for her.
I guess so.
Or do you want to speak? Yeah, yeah, please, okay. Go ahead.
Well, that was a really good presentation we heard tonight, so obviously there's quite a few advantages to the city taking care of this issue. One thing I just wanted to touch on a little bit more was the composting aspect of it, because I think that was mentioned as a potential add-on. I actually think that should be something that just becomes standard for everybody. I do think that composting does have the potential to reduce waste significantly and reduce the methane that that emits in a landfill where there's no oxygen. So I think that that's one area where I'd like to see the city really push for. And also, a lot more things are being made with compostable materials now, so with plastic being such an issue to recycle, a lot of that stuff is actually compostable, but only in an industrial composting facility. So if we don't have that access, then it's not really going to break down. Like, we compost in our backyard, but we can't break down things that are sold as industrially compostable materials, so.
Interesting.
Just thought I'd mention that. Thank you.
Thank you. Then Shakti, and then Madam Clerk, I'll have you start calling them.
Francesca Tornado, Ward Four. I just want to thank staff for putting together a great report, and I looked at the city of Golden's contracted service, and I was really envious because they have a volume-based pricing system, and they also offer recycling and composting, and the prices are so much cheaper than what we pay in the city of Lakewood. So I just think it's a, it's an area where I think it makes sense for the government to actually come in and step in and provide some efficiency for residents, and so I would just encourage you guys to really move forward with this because I think it just is a great opportunity for us to make significant improvements towards our sustainability goals, so, thank you.
Great, thank you. Shakti? Shakti? Good evening, welcome.
So it comes as no surprise to everyone up there that this is an important issue to me, and for the reasons that you've heard, the recycling cost, but the main reason I came here today was to say that I know firsthand, and also from watching closely the communities around, that this is not an easy conversation and that it takes courage. And although we have been having this conversation for a long time in Lakewood, it has not been a city council conversation for most of that time. And so I'm impressed with what you're doing tonight, and I hope that you move this conversation forward and really delve into the options, and including getting bids and getting all the data on the table so that you can see what makes sense for all of us. Yeah, thank you.
This is my first time in front of you all.
Great, good evening, welcome.
That's how important this is to me. I have been learning a lot.
Can you talk into the mic, please? Sure, take your time.
Turn itself off. I've been listening to people's opinions on Nextdoor, and I've been trying to understand why this is such a divisive issue, and it seems like it boils down to a couple of things, and it's implicit assumptions that people don't even realize that they're making. The first one is trash hauling is generic. They're all the same, doesn't matter. One is just as good as another, and the price is the only factor. Well, I, that's fine if you want to think that way, I'm not going to tell you not to, but I think that for other people, it, there are differentiating attributes of companies that will make them different from one another, and some of those things would be, well, the brand loyalty absolutely comes out on Nextdoor when somebody asks for a recommendation. People love their haulers, or they're unhappy and they want to change them. Something that would be like the types of services offered, the quantity of garbage allowed, price, but price is not the only thing that matters to people. And something, the second corollary implicit assumption is, everyone needs the same service. Everyone is just like me, and I read that in their comments, which is, you know, maybe you have a family and you have little kids and you generate a lot of garbage. You have certain needs. If you're a single person and you go out to eat all the time, maybe you don't. The man who was here in the wheelchair, there's a very heartbreaking story that I learned on Nextdoor about, an elderly man who was dealing with his cart, and it got away from him, and he fell, and he ended up dying as a result of his fall, as elderly people are often likely to do. So the carts are a no-no, absolutely, that should not be mandatory, and there are people who think they're beautiful and they make the streets look nice. To me, as I said on Nextdoor, it's like the Stepford Wives to see, you know, everybody all identical. So I'm going to send you guys some more stuff because there's more information from my thread, but I just want you to realize that that is implicitly assumed in a lot of people's thinking about this topic, that trash, trash is generic, and everyone's needs are just like mine.
Great, thank you. Nice job.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, thanks for your time tonight. I will just say that, I'm going to kind of echo what other folks have said just by saying, I agree with moving to support having a contracted system or consolidation. To me, it just seems like a win-win. To me, it just seems like a win-win. You know, there will be fewer trash trucks in our neighborhood, we can all probably save money, we'll have a lot more options. And it's honestly better than what I could negotiate myself. I, I know that other people have talked about the fact, well, I like that choice because, you know, then I can negotiate better rates and I can, you know, get better service. And I really believe that, no matter how good of a negotiator I am, it's never going to be as good as what a volume discount would be that the city could negotiate on our behalf. And then the only other thing I'll say is that I'm fortunate in the fact that I'm able to afford to pay extra for, for the recycling piece. So I get my trash and I also have recycling. I'm, I'm lucky that I'm able to be able to afford that, and I'm also lucky that I'm also able to do composting in my backyard. I know a lot of people are concerned about it for, you know, various reasons, but it's worked out well for me. So if we're, we're able to offer that to people, you know, through a composting service and through recycling services that are included with our trash, I have seen an unbelievable decrease in the amount of trash that I actually put out every week. It's, it's not, I don't even fill up a, a small bucket. So I think about what I am able to do as a, on a personal basis, and then multiply that by whatever we decide, we have 40,000 households, it would be a dramatic difference in terms of what goes to the landfill, and I think that would be a really good, really good thing for the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul Dittson?
Mr. Dittson, good evening.
Good evening. I suppose when you saw me walk in the room, you thought, oh, God, we're going to be here after midnight.
No, we're doing great.
It's up to you now.
Way ahead of schedule.
Keep your comments short, three minutes apiece. I agree with, with quite a bit was already said, but I did want to share an anecdote. I bought a house in Morgantown, West Virginia, this last summer, and spent a couple months out there rehabbing it and making it available as a rental. In that two months, Morgantown has a similar type of program where they contract for the service. It's, in my experience, in both cities here, I think I much prefer Morgantown's model. They're a city of, within city boundaries, it's about 35,000 population as of, I think 2015 was the estimate. That doubles when university is in session. And then in the area outside city boundaries, that is still considered part of Morgantown, it's 130,000. So I think that the scale that they are operating under is similar to Lakewood's. I like the idea of splitting things into regions and keeping competition that way. I think the, by the way, I did intend to commend staff on a very good report. I think they're very thorough. And the recommendation number three, I think, was one that I would endorse based on my experience. I believe the, the competitive business, or bidding does preserve free-market competition, but yet allows the city to bargain with a guaranteed base of service, so I think that it's a win-win. Contract in Morgantown is performance-based. They've got it in the contract that the provider needs to return containers to the curb, including the lids. Containers that are damaged by the contractor beyond normal wear and tear have to be replaced. Requires contractor to provide a recycling program, including electronic and hazardous wastes. So there's a lot that can be done just through the bidding process to, to make sure that this is a comprehensive service. I would point out, too, that government contracts also include, often include requirements for, particularly federal contracts, for small business subcontract. So that might be an avenue to try to preserve the diversity and protect the, the local businesses and the small trash haulers in some way. And as has already been said, you know, city has much better, much more influence in negotiating a contract than we do as individuals. So with all of that, I would strongly encourage you to give this consideration.
Great, thank you.
Oh, by the way, I'm speaking for myself, not the Auburn Neighborhood Association.
Yes. You timed it perfect. You must have done this before.
Christina, not sure your last name?
Griffiths.
Griffiths.
Good evening. Welcome back.
Tina Griffiths again. Mayor Paul, you and I've had conversations about how government, we both wish government didn't always seem to be the go-to, that we wish we could find our own. And I think this may, there may be some alternative thoughts on this. I know I've talked to Dana at Ward meetings, and we've talked about how sometimes it's educating to help convince people of things, too. And I, I know you know I'm struggling with this one because I'm not big on regulation, but I think an option could be, if you guys would consider it, if sustainability and other concerns are there, why not make, why not change it from not necessarily having one contractor? Tell them what, if they're going to participate in trash pickup in Lakewood, these are the rules. And I think that could potentially also add more options, because some of them aren't going to do it. I also wanted to ask, streetwise for building, are the roads, when they're built, do they not have to comply with a certain, knowing these trash trucks are coming through? And would that change if they weren't allowed in there? I don't know if that, I had somebody ask me tonight, well, why not allow the city to pick up your trash? You can't decide who's going to pave and who's going to handle sewer and who's going to do that. And I don't agree with that. I don't think it's necessarily a big choice. It is, but it's not. Please, I beg you to leave the opt-in if you feel that you absolutely have to regulate this to the fullest. I don't like it. I don't. But I do think, like I said, that there are options. Also, and this is kind of crazy, have them do it at night.
We'll edit that out on the tape for the home viewers. All right, any, is there anybody else? All right. So we're going to close public comment. And for, for council's sake, again, I just want to reiterate, this isn't a decision unless council says, we don't want to do any of these. You know, this is an opportunity for more conversation, and so I want to start with either, you know, a couple maybe questions or comments, and I'll just say I am one of those who has 12 houses on his cul-de-sac and five different providers, five days a week, and at one time, we didn't. So I'm also a small business owner, I certainly understand all the concerns. But what I do hear is recycling, special pickup, fall cleanup, compost, I think these are all important things that can enhance all of our experiences I see. You know, when you go to the Midwest, you see people leaving their leaves out to be picked up and composted. Ours just go to the landfill. And so I think there's some good opportunity here, and I thank you for all this hard work. You know a lot about waste. And I even heard from the industry trash haulers here tonight that really appreciate the way you've gone about this and included them in the conversations. So, so thank you for that. I had one question, and then I'll go with my last comment. We heard a group say they wanted to pilot it, and that's where we've struggled. We said, let's go pilot this somewhere and see what kind of reflection we could get or, or what those numbers look like. But the haulers will not contract without an HOA. That's, that's kind of what we've discovered, right? So it's hard to do that. Have we talked about, like, a trash district or enhancing a neighborhood to find some help from the city to create a district that was just with trash that they could then contract with? And they would have that ability? And it may be too far out there tonight for that, this conversation, but I still think some of the times, these things can be best done in pilot projects. So I, think about it, if you think that's something we can do, that's fine. No extra work. And I would say for me, to have a continued conversation, I would go with enhanced licensing or a contracted system, just to carry the conversation a little bit further. That's my, kind of my take on this.
Thanks, Mayor Paul. Well, I wanted to certainly say thanks to everyone who emailed. I think our email inboxes have been lit up with this issue, and as you can imagine, we've had everything from don't change a thing to all the way to municipal service. So it's important for all of you to understand that, that we are getting the community's input, just like when, when our sustainability group went out. And so I'm going to keep my comments and questions fairly limited. I think we need to move this forward in some form or fashion, but I think it's important to open up a few things. One is, it sounds like the municipal option, as earlier, is completely off the table, so I wanted to just get confirmation. Because that's one that's bubbling out there and is causing a lot of churn. So the municipal, Lakewood being the service provider, that one's off the table.
Ms. Franks, well, can I, can we just test that? Not that I think we need to, let's make sure, let's just eliminate that.
I just want to make sure, because that's the.
Is there any desire by this body to have municipal provided, which means the city of Lakewood would go out and buy a bunch of trash trucks?
No.
There you go.
Okay. Just because that one's creating a lot of churn on our, on Next.
Tension Nextdoor.
So, yes. The next thing I wanted to explore is the contracted option. And it sounds like in here that, at least where it is, is it'd be down to one hauler. So that would eliminate choice for that district once that one was picked. And so I just want you guys to possibly, while we're refining this more, to say, is there a, a point at which maybe a one-to-three ratio, like a business saying, you know what, if we were to pick up for every third house, we would still be able to drive rates down? Or we have to pick up every second house? There's got to be a point at which it is economically feasible to drive the price down based on the numbers of houses that they're hitting in there. I'd like to see where that sweet spot is, just to see if maybe we say in a district, it's two providers and we still then offer some choice, but it's still economically feasible. So I'm not asking for an answer, but more just, can we look at where they say that, that cost point is? The other thing I wanted to understand is on the contracted one, is it every address, meaning every house, for example, or every duplex, they would have to be, they would have to have service? Is that correct?
Yes, that, that's correct. It would be all the qualifying residential properties in that, in that geographic area.
Great. So even somebody who today recycles at the Quail facility, they compost and they produce no trash, so they have no service. So I just want to be clear, that they would then need to have service for those folks?
I don't want to say that they would have to. I, I think we need to explore various models, but if we look at what other communities have done, there is generally a minimum level of service that everybody needs to participate in in order to get
Yep.
that efficiency and to get the numbers for the trash company. I believe one approach some communities do take for that type of customer, and I think it's important to note that we can't exclude any company from providing service in Lakewood legally. So under those circumstances, somebody can opt out of a contracted program, however, they're required, in the case of Golden and in a lot of other communities, to still pay for the minimum level of service. So what those communities have done for the super, you know, recycler and composter, or somebody wants to opt out, or someone who just creates really little trash, is they created a super saver service. It's like every other week, really small container, and it's like six bucks a month, a month or something like that, but they still have to buy in at that minimum level.
Okay, that, that's good, good information. On the, as far as how is that billed? I mean, like, so let's just say that every house has to have a minimum level of service. How is that billed? Is it billed by the dis, the provider for the district and is it billed by them?
That's a really good question, because that's one of those things that would be the next level of us to explore, and we've started a lot of that research. There are a lot of different ways that it's done, so it, it appears to us that if the municipality is willing to take on the billing, that that helps prices come down even further, because that takes the burden off of the waste company. But there are examples where that burden is on the company who wins the contract to bid those customers in that district. So I think there's a variety of ways to do it. Of course, we don't provide, you know, water bills monthly to every customer in Lakewood, so we'd have to, we'd have to explore what those options look like in the range, and what that would then do to maybe the cost of services if we were to move forward.
Could this type of a service, if we, if we were to go down the path of some kind of enhanced licensing or contractor and one of the other options, can this potentially eliminate the need for a slash facility that we've had a really difficult time finding a home for?
I think what it does to a lot of those additional services, like, and, and facilities, is it's a release valve, because we're generally pretty much at capacity. So like Quail Street, if everyone's got curbside, then that opens up capacity and we can focus more on promoting it to multifamily and other, and other folks, because it would open up some capacity. As far as the slash facility, I think it would reduce the demand substantially, but I'm not sure it fully removes it, because remember, we're only talking about single-family collection. Now that is a really, you know, those are the large lots and a lot of the properties that do generate a lot of that, but I'm not sure who, what the full customer base looked like for that slash facility, so I'm not sure it would totally eliminate the need.
Just something else to consider. With the recycling piece, would we still be looking at single stream, which we know at this point causes a lot of contamination and therefore possible things that people are recycling don't really end up, they really just end up in the landfill anyways? Are we looking to stay with that or looking to go back to some sort of sorting structure in order to get the true diversion rates? Because again, I'm concerned about the, where you, it just ends up in the landfill anyways.
The answer to that is probably in a couple, couple pieces. My sense is that, yes, it would still be single stream, and the, the infrastructure at this point is built to collect single stream, both the automated vehicles a lot of companies have, and the material recovery facilities have been built with all kinds of technology that sort those materials out. As far as what, tracking what actually is happening to those materials, I think there's three parts to, to your question. So the next is, what happens and are we sure it's actually being recycled? Well, we actually heard that concern quite a bit during our outreach, that, we even heard anecdotes that people were following the companies and watching them dump it. Just note that that was anecdotal, we don't have any data on that. But one thing that communities do when they're putting these contracts together is create reporting mechanisms, and they put requirements in place that help validate and track what's happening to the waste, to get measurements back, and we can really audit what's happening to that waste, and we can be a little bit better able to ascertain that the materials are being responsibly managed. The third piece of your question is the contamination and the market challenges for recycling, and we heard that come up tonight as well. That's an ongoing issue. I mean, recycling markets have historically fluctuated tremendously. We have the issue right now with contamination, and I think, and Lynn can add to this if she has additional thoughts, because she's been working on this as well, but what we've seen is that a lot of technological advances are being pushed to try to make sure waste streams are, the recycle stream is cleaner, that innovations are happening in terms of markets, and we've got some strong markets for things like glass right here in Colorado. And so I think there's a variety of things happening on the industry side that are very positive because we've got a problem, you know, that was presented. So I think there will continue to be ongoing challenges with the really low-quality plastic waste.
Absolutely. Well, well, I wanted to thank you. This is a very passionate and difficult discussion in our community. I, I certainly support continuing to move it forward. Choice is going to be, wherever we can figure a way to kind of layer that in, and I think to also understand what our current eight providers, or whatever the number is, what they're currently able to do, and maybe how that impacts them. And the last plug I'll do is composting doesn't just stop it, maybe the pile or in the, the bin. I'm doing verma composting, and it's fascinating, so if anybody wants to know about that, you can call me.
All right, thank you.
The volume-based pricing, if I understand it, that's what I kind of want to drill down on, the volume-based stuff. So if you, as part of enhanced licensing, if we demanded that certain things, including volume-based pricing, maybe transparency, can you just explain a little bit more how, whether or not whether or not volume-based pricing can be used in the open market that we have now? And I did read the report, we have the, you said Boulder County, and the report is an example. But let's just assume status quo, but you added volume-based pricing as a requirement, that you had to do that. What would happen with that?
I'm not sure I know exactly what would happen. I can tell you, based on some assumptions, what is likely to happen. So the volume-based system, just to be totally clear, is typically at least three different size trash containers, and then recycling in a very large-size container. That's generally how it's designed. So it incentivizes people to put as much material as possible in that recycling bin so that they can subscribe to a smaller trash can. A lot of times, that's a 32-gallon bin as the size small, and then a 64, and then a 96, really large toter. And in some communities, as I mentioned, there's that super saver, really small size. If you're doing that as enhanced licensing, the first factor is that you're adding typically the universal recycling, so everyone's now getting recycling service. So if you didn't have, so that's an added, a potential added cost-
That was going to be question number two, as well, so you-
And then, what is the price system for the small, medium, and large? And so part of the volume-based pricing typically is that the city can't set pricing, but we can dictate a, at least in a contracting situation, like a formula that says size small is X, you know, I'm just making this up, size medium is 2X, and size large is 3X, and there's a ratio there intended to make sure that the smaller, the medium come in at lower, you know, equal to or lower than typical rates were before you set that up. You lose that ability in the, if it's just enhanced licensing. So at that point, the hauler's going to decide what they want to charge for the small, the medium, and the large. And I'm not sure we know what that would look like. We know anecdotally, from looking at communities that have gone that path, that they tend to be the most expensive, or some of the most expensive services for communities, even more expensive than what we're paying commonly in Lakewood.
It's more of that they're going to charge more for, say, the higher-volume households are going to get charged even more than-
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Abel.
Thank you, Mayor. A very complete report, to say the least. I believe the other day I raised with you the issue of making sure in our licensing agreement that all operators offer recycling. I think that was part of tonight's presentation, so thank you. Is there a reason we're not including commercial operators? I mean, what's good for the goose is good for the gander. So can we, can we, first of all, regulate, I know we can't to residences over seven units, but can we regulate trash hauling where in commercial areas, or commercial customers?
I don't have an answer for that at this point. I think we haven't spent as much time looking at commercial waste collection.
I raised that question with you Friday. I was hoping there would be an answer. Mr. Cox, do you know?
I don't know for sure. I know the last time, prior to this one, that my office looked at this issue, I recall it being limited to the same market. So I do think there may be a restriction that keeps us from regulating the commercial market, but we could certainly track that down.
Please do.
Council has, for years, been suggesting that we add another recycling center, and I think our community survey, three years ago, brought that out as well, that Quail Street is such a success, it's at its maximum, I believe you told me the other day. So is there a reason we weren't looking at adding another, at least one other recycling center?
As part of the scope of this project, that didn't fall within looking at this. It's been brought up several times in the past to look at other potential sites. We've never been able to identify another site. And the strategy that was outlined in the Sustainability Plan, specific to residential waste, had to do with the curbside collection system, so that's what we were focused on. So it seems like a separate effort that we could undertake and look into.
Seems to me that's all part of the same puzzle, as is commercial. If we want to reduce our, we want to increase our recycling, then making recycling facilities more available might be advantageous. And I'd like to comment on Ms. Franks' comment about single stream. One of the reasons I use the Quail Center saves me the extra cost of recycling, and it's generally their cars' atmosphere and their body in the community, you know, 500 cars a day, is it? Or a week?
I think it's a week.
A week. That's a lot of cars. So anyway, if you sort your recycling, it's a whole lot better in the stream of processing. And you had mentioned that the comment about diverting, surreptitiously diverting recycling to regular landfills, it's not just that. Republic last summer, in response to the worldwide problem, I guess, of recycling. Republic last summer revealed it had sent 2,000 tons of paper from its recycling facility to a landfill, because there was no way to process it. These things are stacking up in recycling centers, and they can't handle the load, and they don't have the capacity to store it all. So who would compile the contract, and who would conceive the terms of it?
That would be the city. I mean, we would work as staff, and ultimately that would go through our process internally on putting things out to bid and managing that. So there would be an additional new administrative task for the city to take on.
And I assume if we had one or two haulers in each segment, in each of the five possible districts, there would be renegotiation of those contracts on a periodic basis?
Yeah, usually, that's, almost every example we've looked at, there's a period of time so that it makes, ensures that there's continued market competition for those districts. And it gets more complex than that, because you have to make sure the way you set it up maintains kind of an even playing field the next time that a contract comes up. So for example, we'd need to figure out how bins would work, right? If one company wins the initial bid, and they provide a bunch of bins in various sizes, and recycle bins to that entire district, and they own those bins, then the next time the contract comes up, they have a distinct advantage over another company that would have to provide those bins. So a lot of cities have, we can learn a lot from cities that have gone through these processes and maybe learned from mistakes. And we've now found models where, you know, the bins are amateurized over the lay for the contract, so that the city owns them at the end, even though the company is the one initially providing those and managing them. So there's all kinds of little, that's just one example, kind of the nuances, the details that we would need to start really thinking carefully about if we're going to write up some of these potential contracts.
I think the nuances are very important to start thinking about. The, Ms. Franks', idea of more than one company in each of those districts does seem to make sense and preserve the choice at the same time. I assume, though, from conversations with some of the haulers, that once we divide it into five sections, some of them are going to drop out of serving Lakewood anyway. That was, one of the majors told us that at, when they had conversations with different council members a few months ago. So is that your-
That hasn't been communicated directly to me. I think we put in the report that we had reached out to all the haulers, both via email to the contacts that they provide us through the licensing and through a letter. We had heard back from one. I had actually heard back from a second, who then I thought stood me up, but it turns out were purchased by another entity, so maybe that's why they didn't attend the meeting. And then, since then, I've spoken with a third company, so, and had a great conversation. And then I've got an appointment with another major hauler next week that just reached out. So I think as this kind of got some more airtime, they've come out of the woodwork. So I'll learn a little bit more. As far as the two haulers per district, that's the kind of thing where if we run some scenarios, that we can go talk to the haulers with a little bit more concrete scenarios at hand, we can learn a little bit more. I'm not sure how that works, if we have to be transparent with pricing, right? So basically, both companies then having to match each other's price? Or are we basically having two bid, but then one of them's clearly got a better price? And what happens to that, you know, in terms of divvying it up? You know, any legal issues with them coming together to set a price? So I'm not saying it can't work, I just think there's a lot of details there that we need to explore and build into scenarios, and see the response from the companies.
Seems very important to most folks that we preserve competition. And is it possible to not have a two-person, or a two-company, or a one-company serving each of five areas? By placing everything in five areas, then one day a week is the only time they have to see trash trucks and cans on the street. I understand there are other issues that would not address, but it would preserve choice, I believe. And is there a way we can build affordability into this? Because there was a reference to large families and larger amounts of trash. For our large families that have few resources, I would hate to see them priced out of the trash market. So maybe we can look at a way to protect our community members with fewer resources from something that would make it less affordable to live in Lakewood. Is that possible, something we could look at?
I think it's definitely important to consider, and if we're able to build some scenarios and get some pricing back, we'll get an idea of what potential pricing looks like compared to existing pricing, and then we can determine, you know, if we're creating a burden or not, you know, what that looks like. It's also, you know, the potential to provide those households services they otherwise didn't have previously, like recycling or large item collection. And I think it's important to note that that's not just large families, but also for, you know, our seniors and for really small families who are paying a lot and generate very little trash, and may benefit from some of the enhanced services other communities have built into their contracts, like that service for the can to be brought from the garage down to the street and back. And so we've seen some really good policies that way to help, you know, with those kind of, those issues.
The only other concern I have is that we have a preference expressed for using compressed natural gas. And the way I understand it, that requirement would put one certain company at the lead, give them an advantage, because they already have a fleet of CNG and others don't? Is that correct?
We don't, we, I know anecdotally from the meeting I had, that one company does have a lot of CNG trucks, compressed natural gas trucks, and they are much cleaner. I'm not sure we've expressed a preference for that. It's just listed as one way to address an air quality issue, if that's what we want to solve for. It's becoming more and more prevalent. Certainly, it doesn't have to be a requirement. I'm not sure it would actually be at the very, you know, in the top half of the problems we're solving for. So that's totally up for discussion, I think. You know, they are quieter and they have some benefit.
I understand that. And I only bring it up because it's in the report. I would hate to see some company get an advantage over others because they're already equipped for our new standard. The other thing is that there are about a dozen places in here where you say the cost will probably, the cost of certain things would be an additional burden. There are other things that would bring down the cost. But I think if you can keep the price about the same with a dozen extra cost-added features, that would be a heck of a good job. Thank you.
All right, we'll keep going. Thank you. Again, it's just, it's 11:25, so let's see if we can get this done by midnight, get everybody home. Ms. Johnson.
We've really come a long way with this, and I appreciate your report and all that went We've come full circle, Jonathan. Back after World War II and after the Depression, people actually did not generate the kind of trash that we have now, but it was a different thing that was driving it, and that was everybody was poor, for one thing. So we've come full circle, and I am appreciative that people today are looking at the kind of trash that we're producing. We have become a single-use society, and it's important to take another look at the bigger picture on this as well. As I mentioned one other time, when I was growing up, we used to iron our Christmas paper so that we could reuse it. We didn't throw it out. We never threw out aluminum foil. We had incinerators, and so you actually didn't see the trash. And of course, those have been eliminated because of pollution. Milk was in a glass, it wasn't in cardboard. You didn't have cloth diapers, or we had cloth diapers, you didn't have a disposable. Everybody's going to have to take a look at their lifestyle and exactly what their input is into creating this situation. I had two pairs of shoes when I was growing up. My little granddaughter has much more than that. I think that people have forgotten that newspaper is a great cleaner when you're trying to clean your windows. You don't see that anymore. I think I've made my point. We used to have a sieve when I was little. You'd put all your pieces of soap in it, put it in a jar, soak it in water, and then the next morning, you had your dish soap. I am very sustainable, just because I grew up in a very frugal family. So I don't want people to think that I'm not sustainable. I've got a list of all kinds of other things, it's not important. I was actually going to bring some things tonight. My husband has a quilt that was made out of old suits. You know, that doesn't happen today. All of my dolls were homemade, now they're all plastic Barbie dolls. We're a different society, and I understand that. For me, I've been trying to simplify this narrative. There's three people that be, to be at the table. The first are the consumers. There's an upside and a downside, and we've heard that throughout the evening. And your report is very thorough on what people are thinking as well. There's an upside and a downside for the companies themselves. Some are going to be winners, and some are going to be losers. I am disappointed that they were not invited tonight, and that they could at least weigh in. They are, they have a seat at the table. I appreciate that you're talking to them, but I'd like to hear from them personally. And then the third has a seat at the table, and that's the city. And I've thought to myself, what's in it for the city, one way or another, other than we're hearing people complain? I sat down with one of the trash haulers several months ago. Couple things. He promised me some model legislation that I never got, which was disappointing to me. I'd like to see what the contracts look like for other cities that have gone this direction. But then he also mentioned that when you go to this type of model, either single hauler or having contracts, there are franchise fees. And the city charges franchise fees. And then all at once, bells went off. fees. And then all at once, bells went off. And I asked him, how much? And he said three to 10 or 12% of what they're getting. And I thought, you know, that's a pretty good chunk of money. You've mentioned in your report, the bureaucracy that this will create. I don't know if it's going to create another FTE. The franchise fee would more than offset that. I don't know how other cities account for that in their budgeting. And because it's a fee, it does not fall under taper. Also, this recycling thing, in a way, is a scam. Because when I talk to them, they have a place out in Aurora, and whether you pay for recycling or not, it all goes into the same dump. I don't want to take a lot of time here. Years ago, I was told by somebody that if you can find a service in the Yellow Pages, the government should not be involved in it. I had thought to myself, you know, we've talked, we've heard all night about how many trucks are on our streets. One way to actually have that would be to have your trash picked up every other week. You talked about composting and recycling, but we've never talked about compacting. When we first bought our home and had a compactor, I guess those are no longer part of the picture. But you can certainly squeeze things, and we could do it every other week. I don't know if we would need another FTE if we go to this type of model. Would we? I don't know.
I'm not sure I'm prepared to answer that. I don't, it depends on what assessments we would have done based on the way the contracts set up. So, you know, a lot of the work can be put on the haulers, or some of that can be done by the city. So it depends on how we structure that. And I'm not familiar with any franchise fees, or at least fees called franchise fees. In the models we looked at, we did see administrative fees, both currently, if you look at most trash bills, there'll be all kinds of fuel surcharges, administrative fees, and also for cities. And those generally relate to, you know, the other, we've seen a variety of those. Those might be cart fees, if you're trying to slowly have the ownership of the cart not be with the company, and administrative fee to cover whatever additional, you know, FTE or other administrative burden. And we've actually started compiling examples of those fees, so we could see how to minimize those. But from what we've seen, they tend to be in like the dollar to $2 to $3 kind of range per bill, right? Just like you would see on most utilities for covering.
Dumping fee as well for the dump.
Yeah. I mean, part of what can be required is transparency in the billing, so that instead of getting kind of nondescript riders on everybody's bill, we can have them fully defined through the contracting process and printed on everybody's bill, and everything can be very transparent.
That's very interesting. He was very clear that it was called a franchise fee, and that the city charged that to the company, really for the right to have that contract, if you will. I think maybe that's something we can look at, and I'd be happy to give you the name of the company. I'd like to know, now, we as a city require trash. Who is, who's our contractor?
We actually contract with several companies. We go out to bid on a regular basis. Every, I think it's a five-year contract, but it gets renewed every year, so if we're not happy with it. Currently, our trash at most facilities is being collected by Waste Management, our recycling, and our compost is being collected by Alpine Waste. And so during a competitive bid, there wasn't one company that was, had the best pricing for all of those services. So we ended up with a combination.
Do we charge them franchise fees?
We do not. We pay them to pick up our waste.
I spent two days going through this survey of yours and your document. It's, it's awesome. It's very comprehensive. I went through every single comment, Jonathan. Whoever compiled that, you've got my kudos. It took a long time to input all that. I do have a couple of questions. Do we, there are a few people that actually were honest enough to mention that they did not live in Lakewood. Was that part of the survey, as if you were a resident?
The 2016 Statistically Significant Survey are all Lakewood residents, carefully done by the contractor. The notes on the folks that said they did not live in Lakewood were from our face-to-face conversations this summer during our roundtable outreach. And we just, you know, when we were set up at like Lakewood Park during softball leagues, there's quite a few people that play on those teams that come to Lakewood from other communities. So we would, you know, have them walking by and engage with them, and they would tell us, you know, a couple of things, and then let us know they didn't live in Lakewood. And we made sure to document that. But as far as the Statistically Significant Survey results, that's all Lakewood residents.
Okay. Do we have any idea if people responded repeatedly? In other words, you met with them in the park, and then they went into the survey? Because some of them oddly were very similar in the comments.
The Statistically Significant Survey was conducted in 2016. So that was very separate, totally separate from this summer's outreach. The surveys that we made available this summer were very short, like five-question surveys that were put on those postcards that you could mail back, that were on the kiosks. And there was no way to keep people from answering more than once. In fact, there was a, one day when we got like 20 back, and they were all the same comments. They weren't very positive. And they were pretty clearly, you know, we can't prove it, but it was pretty much the same comments, the same color pen, and the same handwriting, and it all came at once. We didn't lean on that data from those survey at all for our recommendations or for our research. The intent of that, not, I'm not talking about the 2016 Statistically Significant Survey. I'm talking about those short questions that we asked. The intent of that, those surveys were to get people to start thinking about the issues and get them to come talk to us or get to the LakewoodTogether.org site, so that we could ask them deeper questions and really engage and find out what they were doing. So we have that data, and we, I think we compiled it because we had collected it. But that is not something we're leaning on as far as, to the same extent of the Statistically Significant Survey or those one-on-one conversations where we actually had clipboards, took notes, reviewed the conversation back with the folks we were talking to, and, you know, can feel pretty good that what we got was, was as close as, you know, we're humans, we make some mistakes, but as close to what they were trying to communicate as we could get.
I understand. Please help me. It sounds like there would be about 40,000 households in play. Is that right?
That's our best preliminary estimate. We would need to...
Because that's what I circled. But the amount of comments was roughly 260, 270? Is that right?
Yeah, of our face-to-face interactions. Correct.
Okay. 40,000 and 270, there's quite a difference there in the amount of input. My concern is, is that there's not a real consensus. The information that you've gotten is beautiful. And as I say, I read every word. This has come on fire on Nextdoor. And it is a totally different picture when you're looking at how people feel about their trash hauling with that and the emails that I'm getting.
For giving this chance, we still have three lights on with people that want to ask some questions. So if you are done with questions, I'd love to get these folks some time.
I would just like to say that my concern about consensus is real. And perhaps, this is a bigger issue than 11 of us should be even taking on. And I would at least like us to at least throw out the consideration to put this on the ballot and let the people decide. It is a huge decision for them financially. And the people that want their choice, want their choice. That's it.
Okay. Ms. Vincent?
I do want to move this forward. But one thing I specifically want to ask is, can we get some information when you come back to us about the collection schedules? It sounds like we could have an option of having all the trucks, whoever they are, going by in one day, perhaps. So I'd like some more information about that. And the other thing is, is I had sent out a question earlier today about new developments and what would happen with them. I probably should clarify it a little bit more, because I wasn't just talking about townhomes, et cetera. But I'm also talking about the multifamily dwellings, so large apartment houses. Is there anything we can do to bring them in? And, because I know they don't have recycling, there doesn't seem to be any criteria. So if possible, I'd like to get some information on that, too.
Yeah, kind of, there's two parts to that. So if they were to fall under the seven-unit threshold, of course, you know, whatever system we're putting in place could apply. That kind of gets into also the, you know, an HOA discussion, whether they would be in or out. And then if new developments creating HOA, how we treat that. And that's a whole separate topic that can have a lot of different potential scenarios. As far as the multifamily, we're kind of chipping away at it. So the first step was, the zoning code for new development really just talked about adequate space for a trash container. And we realized, when we went back to try to help some multifamily properties that wanted to add recycling, that there was no space, right? So just the way we built it, you know, if there's one trash chute, there's one trash chute. If there's one covered area in a parking lot, where do you put the recycling, right? If you're, otherwise you're taking up parking. So we've adjusted some language there to simply make it adequate for waste removal, so we can include recycling. And then there's, there's more that we should be doing if we're wanting to make sure that our new construction and new developments have those services. And we've proposed some things that have gone through the planning commission process and are part of the development dialogue for consideration right now. So we can talk about that further.
Perfect. And the last thing is, is, I don't even know if we can go back and retrofit this, but it's been an issue. I know in a lot of older sections of Lakewood, that, you know, the trash blows all around. The multifamilies and the apartments previously did not have to have enclosures. New ones do now, in other words. So you have trash bins out on the, on the roads. You have them unenclosed and trash blows all over. Is there any way that we could possibly look at that, too?
I think, I mean, that's been an ongoing issue. Actually, you're giving me a flashback to 11 years ago, when I first started. One of the first projects I worked on was a grant to try to help over in like third-place area, get some of those dumpsters covered and off of the, the roadways. I think it's ongoing, but it's, it would be a separate, a separate challenge. And I think a lot of times, those enclosures are required once there's a significant, you know, once we, there's enough redevelopment or enough of a rehab that it triggers those standards. But in the meantime, we would need to be a separate program we create or explore options for, so.
Okay. Thank you.
And part of that problem is illegal dumping as well, with people just going to the dumpsters and dumping them. Mr. LeBeere, then Ms. Gutwine?
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Jonathan. The report was fantastic. It's the best report I think I've seen since I've been here. So I just wanted to comment on that. I'll try to make this pretty brief. I just wanted to, oh, I just wanted to say, I think we have to make sure we work to increase the standards. So I think we have to do something. Obviously, we want protecting price. That's obviously an interesting thing the community's interested in. So to that effect, I think the enhanced licensing or the, taking a look at the contracting zone discussion, I think that makes a lot of sense to look at those two options. I wouldn't exclude any option, but I think that makes a lot of sense. For me, transparency would be a big step forward. I think that would help a lot of consumers. Standard carts, I think that's interesting. I grew up with standard carts everywhere I've lived. I lived in a, hard to admit this as a self-declared Coloradan, but I lived in a socialist state called Texas for a little while. And most of the municipal governments ran their own trash services, and that's actually pretty common in the South, which I think is interesting, just as a political scientist. But anyway, I do think we need to make sure we have curb side recycling. I think that's an important way to go. I think that's obviously, obviously going to make a huge impact for our sustainability goals. Scheduled collection days makes a lot of sense. But the zones make a lot of sense to me to make sure that we're, you know, addressing the cost issues that might be associated with additional services. And I had a couple, well, I guess one question, because Counselor Vincent got one of mine. But I would be curious just to know who would be approving the contracts, if we did go the contract route. Just be interested in that. But obviously, that could be for another discussion. Anyway, thanks.
Counselor Gutwine?
Thank you. Just wanted to say, I, I understand what Counselor Johnson was saying about people being better recyclers. And just wanted to say, my, my grandma doesn't believe in climate change, but she is the best recycler and least wasteful person that I know. So I appreciate that perspective. Okay, couple questions. And first of all, thank you so much for the incredible report. Like everybody has said, it's just tremendous amount of information and really helps us make a database decision. First question, I've been getting questions from constituents about recycling, and if it's even worth it at this point, because China has closed down the plastics recycling, is there even anywhere for plastic to go? Is this still worthwhile?
I mean, I think it's similar to, it was brought up earlier, I think by Counselor Frank's. There are markets for materials. Some of them have shifted to other countries. Some of them are only accepted if things are cleaner, and other ones are, are big question marks. So I think what's important to probably note is that these markets have changed a lot all the time. I mean, even when we've been struggling over the years, you know, with costs varying significantly at the Quail Street Center, you know, one year, things were really good, and we were getting paid. And other, next year, you know, we, we had to pay a bunch of money. So I would urge us to probably take a long view of creating a system that can put, be put in place so that things, you know, so we have the opportunity to make sure there's opportunities in the future to have those things managed best possible, knowing that there'll be risk in any given year, and when markets go up and down for glass or for cardboard or different types of plastic, or when innovations come in to make use of some of those materials.
Great. Thank you. Second question is about, and Counselor Vincent may have asked this while I stepped in the bathroom, but are we able to exempt HOAs? We've had a couple of HOAs reach out to us that have already, have a system they're happy with.
You know, I think that's up to, to you all to decide how you want to handle that, if we get to that point. Plenty of communities have let HOAs be exempt from an otherwise, you know, organized system. You can do that a couple of ways. You can have them automatically be out of the system and then opt in. You could have them be assumed to be in unless they opt out. Some communities have created criteria for their ability to opt out. So if ultimately our system says that you have to have volume-based pricing and universal recycling, they can opt out if they also provide that. That's an option. We don't have to set that rule. But that would be, you know, do we want to hold the HOA to the same standard we're asking the rest of the community, but they're allowed to contract on their own? Those are, you know, or are we simply saying, you know, you're already basically consolidated for your own area, and you're not creating the same impacts on your roads, so we're not worried about it? Other communities that have started that way, we know in Golden and some others, they are now going back to try to work with the HOAs to get them into the system, because it still does add a lot of vehicles into their communities when they're different companies. And it's not, you know, results in not as good a pricing for everybody else, because you're losing that customer base within a district from the, the primary bidder. So there's a lot of things we can consider, but we could certainly, it's very common to start the whole system out by having them opt out. And then, you know, when there's new development, you have to decide, is a new HOA able to opt out? Are they coming into the city's, you know, system? So there's a lot of variations we can look at. And ultimately, your, this body could decide how you want to handle that.
At the very least, I think that we should consider exempting existing HOAs, because they've already gone through this. They, they are already consolidated. They're already getting the prices that they like. They're already recycling. So, and, so I think that that is worth considering. So, and, so I think that that is worth consideration. Okay. A couple other special circumstances that some neighbors have brought forward to me. And one of them that's really important to me is you've mentioned about the curb-to-door service. I know Pro Disposal offers this and I have a couple of neighbors who, you know, have disability or are older and this is just really important to have that option. So I, it sounds like that is something that we could include. If we do a districting, we can include that they require that the company would offer that service. Is that correct?
I mean, I think that's one of the things we need to find out what cost looks like for that. My understanding is that for a lot of haulers, they know exactly how many seconds it takes to go from a customer to the next customer. And a lot of the companies that are most efficient have automated trucks, right? They have an arm that reaches out and grabs a trash can and puts it back down. If we're requiring that type of service, that's going to slow down their process and probably changes price. So does it change price enough that it makes it so, you know, bids come back much higher if everybody has that service? We can find that out. We, I don't know the answer to that. I, I think more commonly what, what we've seen is that's written in as a service they provide to, for free or in, included in the base cost for select populations, right? So for seniors or people that prove that they need that service, it's included. And then it becomes an add-on service that other customers could opt to pay a few extra bucks if they want that service. And so that would maybe be an approach that ensures we have that available to those that need it, but maximize, you know, reduces the liability of that cost into the whole system as a whole. So we could explore. And there's no way to know until we kind of put out some feelers and get some, some quotes.
That, that approach makes sense to me to have it, you know, available for the people that need it as an op, and, you know, it could be optional for others because we certainly don't want to add a bunch of costs for people who don't need, need that service. So, thank you. Okay. Other special circumstances, you know, we have another neighbor who has horses and she needs a special dumpster. What, what are they going to do in these scenarios? Like if we did go with districting, are they going to, are they able to opt out or maybe do this super saver service you mentioned?
I mean, whatever program we create, we need to create space for specialized waste collections to still be available and be, and I think that's the kind of thing that's outside the scope of this curbside collection. If they have to have a special dumpster because of manure or because they are keeping chickens or whatever, special waste they're generating on that property, that's just, you know, part of, part of the fabric. And I think that's outside the typical curbside standard collection. So you, you know, we wouldn't have that as part of the program and they'd be free to hire someone as long as they were licensed like they are now.
Great. Last question is, I, I understand that we're not able to do certain things with, I believe it's above seven units or more, but are we unable to do anything? So for example, get transparency in their pricing or anything like that?
Hmm. That's a good question. I'll have to look into that. I know we can't organize that, but are we allowed to, you know, where the line is between requests, you know, adding licensing requirements and adding those types of regulations? I'm not sure. That's a great question. We'll have to look into that.
Okay, thank you. I think that would be important if we can get that same transparency for everybody who lives here. Okay, so I, I think that I agree with what other counselors have said. I think that we should move forward and get more information about a concrete, you know, look at some concrete options and different scenarios with districting. I think, you know, there's a lot of potential benefits that we've heard, including saving money, which, you know, as it's getting more and more expensive to live here, it, it's just really important that we at least look at it. And reducing pollution, the new services. I'm personally really excited about the opportunity of curbside composting at my house. I applaud you, Counselor Franks, for composting at home, but it's not for me. And the increasing recycling rates, all of the things that we've talked about. So I'm, I'm actually just really proud of our community for having this conversation. I know it's a tough one. And I want to tell everyone, you know, that I hope we can continue to have this in a respectful way and everyone's perspectives are valid. So I know we have some people that choice is the most important thing, government do not touch my trash and other people that, you know, really want to see some of these benefits. So just thank you. And also, please keep your comments respectful on Nextdoor. I actually had someone reach out to me today saying that they were feeling bullied on Nextdoor for sharing their view about trash. And that's just unfortunate. So I'm very excited and proud of us for leaning into this conversation and thank you for all of the work over the years to get us to this point. Thanks.
Ms. Johnson promised she had one last question.
Actually, I think this is for Tim. Tim, I have a whole file on trash hauling and found an old document regarding Sherman antitrust type issues in municipalities creating monopolies and anti-competition. My information is old, but has there been anything relevant to antitrust type issues recently?
I've not heard of anything. I have not been deeply involved in this project, but we can certainly see if there's anything new, new developments there. Sure.
Okay. So thank you all very, very much. And it looks like we've culled it down to more information on enhanced licensing, so potentially what an enhanced license would look like? I think I heard there was consensus on that. And then more information as far as a contracted system. And so you could begin to start looking at models and get better data produced based on some of that feedback. Is that the consensus that I'm getting on those two? Okay. So is that, is that clear? Are there any questions that you need clarified?
Yeah. No, I think, I think that gives us what we need to roll up our sleeves and get it, you know, a little bit more fine-tuned.
Okay. That's great. All right. Well, well done. You got that done before midnight. So, so I'm not, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna speak a lot, but I do just want to thank you, thank you all very much for all your hard work and thank the community for hanging out this late. And thank council. We all have made a commitment that we're going to try to be more efficient for everybody's time. And again, sometimes you ask questions that you know the answer to because you want the community to know, but always if there's an opportunity to get these questions answered prior, it'll be super helpful. As we look towards the next few weeks, specifically February 25th, we have three second reading ordinances, big ones, setting fees for lodgers, no, short-term rentals, a rezoning, and then an amendment to our code. And so there's a lot of stuff coming up. So let's continue. We try to get these out 10 days early and be as efficient as we can be. And I'm going to be efficient and quit talking. So, Mr. Abel?
For reports?
Yeah, reports.
Oh, report.
Mr. Labear?
No report.
Mr. Skilling? Ms. Gutwine?
We have our Ward Five meeting this Saturday at 9:00 a.m. at Bear Valley Church. We're talking about bees and urban agriculture, yeah, urban agriculture and also probably trash.
Mr. Royball?
No report.
Ms. Vincent? Mr. Bita?
No report.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes, unfortunately. Just a quick reminder that this Thursday at 7 o'clock, right here in City Council Chambers, the movie Chasing the Dragon will be screened. It's on opioid addiction. It is produced by the FBI. There will be a comprehensive panel afterwards. Please come. See what the face of opioid addiction actually looks like in our city. Thank you.
Franks? Ms. Millard? Mr. Graham? Mr. Cox?
Did I say Graham?
Yeah. Did he change it? I swear it didn't all night.
Yes, it did.
Ms. Hodgson?
Yes, I told you that I would check and see if there was an early meeting already scheduled for February 11th and you don't have one scheduled. So during this meeting, our deputy city clerk has already made note that we will have an executive session at 5:00 on the 11th, which will be a continuation of the conversation we had earlier this evening.
Great. Anything else for the good of the order? Agent Hunt, thanks for keeping us safe. And remember, don't believe everything you read on Nextdoor. We'll adjourn at midnight.